All right, well, we are at seven o'clock with a full agenda and I think everybody's here. So I think let's call the meeting to order and Debbie would be noted.
Noted.
First up. Thank you. First up, we have our agenda review. I'll make just a couple of quick, quick mentions about it. Part of it is going to involve consultants presenting information to us. As you know, we're going to get the pension obligation bond presentation initially. And we also will have Kristen Miles from OSBA joining us. She's going to join about 7:30. We, I told her, you know, it depends a little bit on when the other conversation wraps up. In any event, just a couple of quick notes about that. Are there any concerns or recommendations about the agenda, or I would also accept the motion at this point?
I move to adopt the recommended agenda.
Second.
And second, any further discussion? Okay, Debbie, would you take the vote?
Nothing.
I couldn't hear if you said anything, Debbie.
How's that? No?
I agree.
Okay, Jonathan?
I vote yes.
Oh, thank you. Jennifer?
Yes.
Shelley? Yes. Earth?
Yes.
Um?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, first up, we have the pension obligation bond presentation and discussion. I think Lauren Millen was going to present. I don't see her promoted yet. I don't know, Steve, if you want to get started.
She's not in the list of attendees. She literally just joined, so I'm promoting her now.
You know, go ahead and I can introduce her, Jonathan, if she kind of gets set up if you'd like.
Sure.
Hi, Lauren. Thank you for joining us tonight. This is Steve. Jonathan just turned the, turned the meeting over to us and the pension obligation bond, so I was just going to introduce you. So I'd like to thank Lauren for, for joining us tonight. She works with Carol Samuels and others at Piper Sandler and I also want to say that, thank her publicly for, she was the chief underwriter that helped us with our general obligation bond refinance. It's a lot of work and she helped us through that process, so we're real, real thankful for her, for her partnership. So Lauren is here to, to review the materials that we talked about at our March 8th board meeting. There were three links on the March 8th board book. I believe one of those, the 47-page presentation is on tonight's. Our specific numbers are still, I think, just on the March 8th board meeting, at least as of this afternoon. But Lauren will be talking about those in more detail tonight. And I think, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Lauren, but she'll be presenting a pared-down version of, of the original presentation. Lauren will be presenting for about 25 minutes and then we'll have 15 to 25 minutes for some discussion and Q and A. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Lauren. Thank you for being here, Lauren.
Yeah, thanks, Steve. It's nice to see everyone. So I do have my presentation and I, it looks like I'm able to share my screen, so I will do that. There we go. So, um, please feel free to jump in with questions throughout, if it makes sense to ask them then, rather than waiting till the end. But we'll try and make it, make it through all the content as quickly as we can. It can get a little heavy. So we are talking about pension bonds today. It's a very complex subject. I don't think you can hear this too many times, even, you know, I've been working in Oregon almost 12 years and, you know, I feel like I continue to learn more just about PERS and pension bonds all the time. So if you've seen this before or checked out the materials before, then this may just be a nice refresher. So we're, basically, we're talking about pension bonds because they may help you reduce your pension costs, right? And the "may" is what's key here. It's not automatic. There's a lot of things that are unknown, even after the bonds are issued, that essentially will determine whether you're not used to ultimately save money over the life of the bond issue, so. It's, it's not a slam dunk. There are some risks that we'll talk about, but there's definitely the potential to save money. You know, as the district has seen since they've issued pension bonds in the past and done quite well so far. So, you know, pension bonds are really, they're not the, the best option, but as you probably are aware, there are not a whole lot of options available to Oregon municipalities in order to reduce their pension costs. There's, there's just not a whole lot you can do. So this is one option that folks have turned to in an effort to reduce the cost. The concept is to borrow at low interest rates and then you send those funds to PERS and you can't get those back. Once you establish that side account with PERS, that money is there. You can't pull it back in a couple of years or withdraw, you know, extra earnings over the life. It's untouchable. The concept, you know, if your returns exceed your borrowing rate, in general jurisdictions will save. There are some other factors that come into play that may have an impact there, but, you know, in general, it's arbitrage. You want to earn more than you're borrowing at. So those funds in your side account are invested alongside the, the PERS fund. So we'll talk a little bit about, you know, how the PERS fund is done on their investments and they've done pretty well, which is why folks continue to look at these. But all those earnings and losses are credited directly to your side account, so that's not shared with other districts. And that side account is drawn down over the life of the bonds, essentially, but over a 20-years period from the date of the last valuation. So in this case, it ends up being about 19 years. And you're provided a rate credit, so it reduces the amount that you need to send to PERS each year. You know, you may remember when you've sold new money general obligation bonds in the past or are talking about a new general obligation bond in the future, those borrowings are eligible for tax exemption, meaning that investors don't pay taxes on their interest income and they are willing to accept a lower interest rate. Well, pension bonds don't qualify as a tax-exempt purpose. So they'll be sold on a taxable basis. Just means a slightly different market and slightly higher rates, but those rates that we're looking at are still really low. And, you know, just if folks have been following this, you know, the side accounts funded with POBs are not eligible for state matching funds under the employer incentive fund. So those have to be cash-funded. So, um, sorry, I'm adjusting my, my Zoom screen so I can see things. Why we are talking about these right now, essentially, interest rates have been at historic lows. This graph is the 10-year and the 30-year US Treasury bond. The larger graph goes back to 96. And you can see that we're at the far right over in '21 and we are still at the very, very low end of where rates have been. Again, we're not at the lowest end anymore. You know, it usually takes a while for the momentum for pension bonds to get going, so. You know, once rates had been low for a while, folks started getting interested in this and got the wheels turning on the whole process. And of course, it's about as soon as we start talking about these, when the, the market starts to go up. But rates have come up, you know, about 50 or 60 basis points in the last few months. We have used a cushion in the analyses that we've run. And so basically, we're still, the current market is still below that, but we have eaten into, into a bit of that cushion so far. And the inset here you can see is the, just the one-year detail and how those rates have started to creep up on the, really just the last couple of months. So we're just hoping that, you know, things turn back around or, you know, settle out where they are. We'd still be happy. So a little history with Oregon and POBs. So over 100 pension bonds were issued, you know, in the last 20-plus years in a total of over $6 billion. The interest rates that folks received ranged from, you know, just under 3.5% to just over 7%. So some folks, you know, actually did pension bonds and locked in their borrowing costs, you know, upwards of 7%. And borrowing amounts, I mean, folks of all different shapes and sizes have done pension bonds. And, you know, the smallest was about 3 million, up until the, the largest borrowing was the state of Oregon, over $2 billion. And most of the school districts and community colleges, you know, such as yourself, back in the early 2000s, borrowed on a pooled basis, meaning that you got together with a bunch of other school districts and all issued bonds at the same time. They were marketed with one official statement, you know, one credit rating for the pool and also has an intercept agreement with the state whereby they, you know, intercept some of your state school fund revenues and send it directly to the pension bond trustee. That actually makes investors really happy that you can't get your hands on it and potentially use it for other things. But so they, the rating agencies also will look at basically the state's rating with this agreement in place. And this intercept agreement would be available this time as well, talking about doing it on a pooled basis again. Um, generally, you know, a lot of folks have actually seen savings from the pension bonds that they have issued, but there, you know, have been a few unlucky folks that have not realized savings and may not realize any savings over the life of the issue. We'll look at a couple of examples in a few slides. So there, they do carry those risks. And for that reason, issuing a pension bond is not like refinancing your mortgage. Success largely depends on what the market does and what your investments return over the life of the bond, more than what the borrowing cost is. The borrowing cost is important, but that is what's locked in and that is the, the known sort of variable from the beginning. And, you know, in general, again, this is simplified, but if your investment returns exceed your borrowing rate, you should expect to have lower pension costs than you otherwise would have. But if your returns equal your borrowing rate, you'll basically break even and vice versa. Returns are less than your borrowing rate, borrowers could actually be worse off than if they had done nothing at all. And so, you know, I think that is a hard thing for folks to consider when you're looking at entering into these pension bonds because there is the very real possibility that, you know, your costs could actually go up by doing these instead of going down, which is, you know, obviously the, the ultimate goal here. We are currently projecting borrowing rates of 3.5%. That's what all the analyses have been run on. Again, that was a 1% cushion over rates when we first started this process and we've eaten about, eaten up about half a percent of that at this point, but that 3.5% is still above the current estimate for selling these. So again, rates are really low. Remember, the, the lowest borrowing cost for anyone that has done these in the past was 3.43%. So we'd be really happy if we could lock in 3.5%. The other side of this equation, as we've, I've mentioned, is the investment side, right? So we've got low borrowing cost, that's great. But what's kind of the, the likelihood that the investments are going to outpace that borrowing cost? Well, you know, if you've any familiarity with finance, you'll know that, you know, past performance is not indicative of future results, but it's the best that we have. So we can look back at the actual returns for the PERS fund, in this case, back to 1970 in this chart that you can't read. But it is the annual returns all the way back to 1970. So now we have a 50-year period here. The, you know, of course, they make it more complicated with the various account types and so there's, you know, lots of kind of different rates floating around. But the regular account earnings for that 50-year period have been, on average, 10%. For the tier-one crediting, it was 9.4% in that same period. And for variable accounts, it was 11% over that 50-year period. And then the average return on side accounts over a shorter period from 2007 to 2019 has been about 7.6%. So just a little bit over the assumed earnings rate. And the one-year earnings for the latest period that we have available through the end of January was 8.2%. So looking at the averages, that looks pretty good, right? You know, if you knew you were going to make that every year, this would be a very easy decision. That's a lot higher than that 3.5% borrowing cost. But what's kind of hidden in, again, this table that you likely can't read is several years where the investment returns were actually negative and the PERS fund lost money. And of course, the worst of that was 2008, when the, the fund lost just over 27%. And there were some unlucky school districts that borrowed in 2007. They did pension bonds in 2007. So the following year, they saw their side accounts lose over a quarter of their value from the very beginning. And so that reduces the amount that, the balance that you have in the fund that you can even earn, you know, future interest on. So it has a really big impact on how successful the borrowing actually is. And for some folks, they will likely not overcome those losses at all before the, the bonds are paid off. It's another thing, you know, once this, the fund, the side accounts established and then, you know, your maturity is, say, 18 to 19 years down the road, you ultimately don't know overall how this sort of venture pays fares until the very end. You could have, you could see savings for a lot of years and then you may see some dis-savings. That's just really hard to overcome in total, so. It could be a little stressful. Well, we've talked about some of the scary stuff. Again, there are risks, but we wouldn't be talking about this if there wasn't the possibility to earn, to actually have this be a positive venture, right? And to actually have savings on your pension costs. And one thing that we can look to is this Echo Northwest study, which I think you may have seen already. This was presented to all the districts that were interested back at the end of January, I believe. And Echo Northwest is a independent consulting firm specializing in economics, finance, and planning. And they use this Monte Carlo simulation to kind of look at what is the probability that these pension bonds are going to save you money, that, you know, overall, your investment earnings are going to be, exceed the borrowing cost. In this case, that's the TIC that's listed at the bottom of this graph. So that's the true interest cost, just a blended borrowing cost for the bonds. And so the three numbers that they ran was a borrowing cost of 2.5%, 3.5% and 4.5%. And those are much lower than the borrowing rates that we had looked at when pension bonds have been done previously. And largely because of that, the probability that you will actually save money is actually quite a bit higher than when this simulation has been running in the past. You know, Carol, that Steve had mentioned, has been doing these pension bonds. Basically, I think she's worked on almost all of them that have been done in the state of Oregon. And she was hoping to see at least a 70% probability on the, you know, the, the higher number. And we're at 80 on that 4.5%. And then at the 3.5% where we actually ran our scenarios that we'll look at in a minute, the probability is 89%. And if we're able to lock in even lower borrowing costs at 2.5%, which again, is where the market actually was when we started this venture, the probability that you save is almost 95%. So it's never going to be, you know, 100, but these are pretty solid numbers. Yeah. And, you know, this study is something that was, you know, there are some changes, broader changes, you know, with Senate Bill 1049 for PERS. And there was also some restrictions added for pension bonds, and this is one of those restrictions that this study needs to be done before folks borrow and do a new issue of pension bonds, which, check that off the list, it's been done. And the issuers need to consider the results and sort of have a discussion of those in a public meeting. And so this, you know, this study and executive summary will be attached to the resolution that the district considers if they move ahead. Yeah. Kind of the, the two main pieces again, borrowing cost and investment earnings. But I alluded to the fact that there's other things that can also impact the, the results. And, you know, just things like timing of earnings also matters. Again, early negative returns such as, you know, those folks that borrowed in 2007 and then lost a huge chunk of their side account the following year. Stuff like that is a lot harder to overcome. You know, unless, as opposed to, say, having those negative earnings later, when you've already banked quite a bit of positive earnings, as was the case for the district, actually. So rate credits are also not consistent. So earnings variability, the, that, you know, the difference in actual investment earnings compared to, you know, where the assumed rate is when this was modeled. It can cause volatility, even if earnings exceed your, your borrowing rate. So there can be a year for a variety of reasons where your rate credit may not exceed the debt service on your pension bonds. Side accounts also cause a doubling down of investment performance. So since you've got more funds invested alongside with the PERS fund, those lower interest earning years have, have a compounding effect on your net rate. So if the, say, the school pool rates are projected to go up 3% next biennium, but your side, you know, the side account didn't do very well and your rate credit is projected to go down, then the district's net rate could potentially go up higher than that 3%, say, 4% or 5%, just because that rate credit has actually gone down from the prior year. So it can cause a lot of more volatility than folks who haven't done pension bonds are seeing. Also, growth in payroll relative to the 3.5% assumption that's baked in, you know, by PERS and we've used that same assumption in our analysis. But, you know, differences in your actual payroll growth can cause increases or decreases in your rate credit and cause some volatility there as well. And if it's extreme or extended, very high payroll growth, that can also affect compounding in, in interest returns on that side account. Reductions in the assumed rate can also reduce rate credits at least temporarily. So from time to time, PERS may change the assumed rate and that could cause some volatility there as well. So I had mentioned a few examples. We look at three real-life school districts that borrowed at different times. School District A is kind of the poster child. This has paid off really well for them. They borrowed very early in 2002 and 2003, and even though their borrowing costs were over 5%, they borrowed a lot, almost $500 million. But they benefited from those, a few years of really strong market returns before the 2008 recession. And as we'll see on the next slide, it's really paid off for them. School District B is kind of more in the middle. They issued a little bit later in 2005 and 2015, but have the benefit of slightly lower borrowing costs. They borrowed a little bit less, just over 140 million. But they also benefited from some early market returns ahead of that 2008 loss. And School District C was one of the unlucky ones. They issued just once in 2007 at a over 5.6 borrowing cost, 5.6%. And then they only borrowed about 40 million, but the combined impact of those immediate, you know, negative returns, and they also had some very high payroll growth at the beginning, that has just really impacted the savings that they could see from doing the bonds. So School District A, again, borrowed just under 500 million. Can see that line third from the bottom, their current side account value as of the most recent valuation. They actually have more in their side account that they even borrowed to this day. So they've had very strong investment earnings over the life. And even the negative returns in 2008 couldn't, you know, put a big dent in those. And to date, these are actual numbers comparing their rate credits versus their pension bond costs. They've saved over 283 million and are projected to save an additional 186 million. School District B, again, they didn't issue as early, but they have done fairly well and have saved over 39 million and are projected to save an additional 7 million. So not bad. School District C, again, so you can see there, they borrowed just over 40 million and their side account balance is now 21 million, almost half of what it was when they originally borrowed. And that has a real impact. That just means they have drawn down that side account balance much quicker than other folks. And you can see the impact on savings to date. They've actually lost money. Essentially, they have paid 2.4 million more than what their PERS cost would have been had they not borrowed. And they are projected to pay even more, I guess, save even less, an additional 7.3 million. And I think that's what's really hard, is that once these are established, it's, it's really out of your control. And again, if, you know, things go well, you can't just say, oh, give me back my money. I don't, I don't want to do this anymore. You kind of have to wait it out, even if it looks like it could potentially get worse before the end of the bonds. Luckily, you know, the amount of folks that are in School District C's position are very few. A lot of districts have come out positive to date and are projected to come out positive by the end of the bonds as well. Bottom line, employers with side accounts are going to have to deal with more volatility than those without. And that's just for those various factors that we talked about. That volatility, though, is not necessarily an indicator of whether you're better or worse off by doing pension bond. It could just potentially cause more It could just potentially cause more cash flow issues uh than you may have otherwise seen. So it is important for folks to still um, you know, hold some type of reserve. On the district's books, you know, not at PERS that you can use to kind of um smooth over some of those fluctuations. Um, from biennium to biennium when new rates are set. So. Now we have the district's numbers. This is a lot of background, there are a lot of numbers, I'm not going to go through all of them. But uh, it just gives you a little bit of information, um, you know, about the system and the school district pool. And then also the district's numbers, so. We've got information on the UAL and side account um from the two thousand seven valuation. Kind of to show you how things were pre-two thousand eight. Um, and then also the three most recent valuations. So of course, pre-two thousand eight, the district was in a great position. Um, had a very sizable surplus in that side account uh over eighteen million dollars. Uh, and then fast forward a few years and now um. In twenty nineteen, you can see how the the UAL has ballooned, you know, from six million dollars for T one, T two. Uh, up to over forty-five million dollars. Uh, and you know, opserp went from a surplus uh to a over three million dollar liability as well. Uh, and the the side account uh is currently valued at uh just over fifteen million. So the district's net UAL is just about thirty-three point seven million. So one of the questions you may have is, well, how do we figure out how much we're going to borrow for pension bonds? Well, for all the analyses that we ran, we've assumed the district borrows the full um amount of the net UAL. But that's not required, you can absolutely borrow less. Um, that's just where we've um, you know, started for everyone at this point. Um, and then, yeah, also background on your rates down here at the bottom. Uh, one bright point, of course, is that rates are projected to go down a little bit this next biennium. It, but I think after that, you know, with the re-amortization of the UAL, they'll still, they're still projected to rise after that. So, uh, another key factor here, payroll growth. So PERS uses a three and a half percent assumption, uh, you know, in. Figuring out the the rate credit and then uh amortizing that rate credit. And then um, we've used the same three and a half percent assumption in our uh analyses. But you can see, you know, that those averages. Were pretty close on the system and the district is very close on their average. But the actuals from year to year can swing fairly significantly. You know, in having six, three percent down to a negative year. So those changes from year to year are also going to have an impact on. How quickly that rate credit is drawn down. Um, and it can again increase kind of the volatility from biennium to biennium. And you know, while we've modeled a three and a half percent growth. When those rate credits are are set, you know, every two years, they're going to factor in. The actual growth that you've seen over the last two years. So eventually it, the rate credit kind of catches up to where your actual growth is, but there's a little bit of a lag. And the district situation, so the district borrowed in two thousand three and two thousand four. Uh, pretty early on, just over sixteen and a half million. And so far has done really well. You've saved um just over seven point six million total, well, actually even more, our data. Uh, maybe you may have had your first rate credit not till two thousand four, maybe you had an extra with the two thousand threes, but. In any case, just over seven point six million. Uh, or about five point three million um in PV savings. So present valuing those savings back to kind of the the issue date, if you will. Uh, and in every year, you've had positive cash flow except for one, it looks like. In two thousand seventeen, the rate credit was actually lower than the pension bond debt service for. Whatever reason, it's kind of hard for us to to analyze, but um probably just a combination of. Uh, all those things that we talked about, kind of payroll growth catching up and um, you know, investment returns. So projected. Oh, you're projected to save an additional uh three point four million over the. Ro- remaining life of the side account. Uh, this just uses the standard assumptions from first, so the assumed earnings rate seven point two percent. And that three and a half percent payroll growth, so. It's looking like this um was a a good bet for the district when these bonds were entered into previously. So for the new scenarios. Again, we can't ultimately predict how this will turn out. It's going to depend a lot on uh what investment earnings actually do. But we can look at different scenarios and see how they might impact those projected savings. So in all three of these cases, again, we assume that you borrow the full UAL. Uh, and we've projected that forward in time as of, you know, this August. Um, is when the payoff is anticipated to happen. Um, so the borrowing amount is just over thirty-five point six million, almost thirty-five point seven. And in each of these scenarios, the debt service is the same. The only thing that changes is the investment earnings. And our base case just uses that seven point two percent assumed earnings rate. And you can see at the bottom here that the projected savings are just over sixteen million. Uh, total, just over eleven million on a present value basis. And as a percentage of what you borrow, it's almost thirty-two percent. And you folks may remember kind of from discussions on the refunding. Now, again, this isn't exactly a refunding, but it's somewhat um, you know, similar. Uh, you know, refunding, we used to have a three percent threshold for advanced refundings in the state of Oregon. That meant that it was considered a a good refunding if those savings. Were over three percent of your borrowing amount. So kind of look, keeping that threshold in mind and seeing that the savings could potentially be about thirty-two percent. That means that's, that's really strong, that's almost, you know, that's ten times uh what we um used to require. So that would be a a really great deal. The scenario two is even rosier, essentially assumes that. Uh, we have the same investment returns that we had from two thousand two to two thousand nineteen, so some really strong years. Before we hit the negative year, uh, and then, you know, the actual returns there on through twenty nineteen. Followed by seven point two percent for the remainder. And savings get even better, they're over twenty-seven million uh total. We're nineteen million on a PV basis and almost fifty-four percent of the borrowing amount. Scenario three assumes um, you're kind of the, one of those two thousand seven borrowers. That you essentially lose over a quarter of the side account right off the bat. Um, but then have actual earnings from um two thousand seven to twenty nineteen, followed by that seven point two percent thereafter. And what's key here is that there are actually still savings. Um, it doesn't look as good, obviously, as scenario one or two. Uh, but savings are still projected to be six and a half million total or four and a half million present value. And over twelve percent. And that's still pretty darn good. Uh, and actually surprising, usually when we run this scenario, you know, folks have. We did a round of pension bonds in twenty fifteen and twenty eighteen and so. When we would run these scenarios, you know, one and two would usually be positive and three would generally be negative. But the borrowing cost that we're using, that three and a half percent is just so low than what we've been looking at in the past. That you're still able to overcome those early negative returns. Again, comparing to district C that we looked at, um, who's going to not save any money. Uh, or projected not to save any money. Uh, their borrowing cost was that five point six seven. And so just by locking in uh lower borrowing costs upfront. It puts you in a a much better position um to weather these, a- any potential really bad negative returns. The next few slides are just the detail for all three of those scenarios. So um, again, you can see the total savings here and the present value. Comparing the projected rate credit to the projected debt service. And so you can see the the rate credit here is very steady. And that's just because we're assuming that the investment returns and payroll growth that actually happen. Are the same as the assumptions from the start and the same as the assumptions baked into PERS. So that rate credit percentage doesn't change. But if we see on the next scenario, when the investment returns actually bounce around as they. Will do in real life, that rate credit you can see is um changed every couple of years when the rates are set. And it's essentially, again, kind of trued up for what has happened in those actual investment returns in the last couple of years. And uh, even with the the large amount of um losses in two thousand. You know, essentially the two thousand eight year here, you are still seeing a positive cash flow every year. And part of that is just the, you can see how much that side account balance is able to build up. Before those losses hit. And then are not necessarily worst case, but um, you know, pretty darn bad scenario of two thousand seven earnings. Right off or losses right off the bat. Can see you borrow uh over thirty-five million and the next year your side account is down to under twenty-five. Um, so that has a a very real impact. And there are a couple of years of uh negative cash flow where that rate credit. Is lower than the debt service. Um, and a couple of years where it's really more break even, but even those negative years are not that negative. Um, it's not hugely negative there uh compared to what we have actually seen for again those. Two thousand seven, actual two thousand seven districts. And again, big difference there is the um borrowing cost. So if the district is interested in proceeding, the, this is the schedule for the pooled borrowing. The plan is to um notify Piper and Hawkins, which you may have already done this. It's March twenty-second today, yeah. Um, uh, and folks are supposed to request resolutions. Uh, and get those in front of the board before April twenty-third. Again, that resolution's going to um, you know, include mention of that Echo Northwest study. And then it's also going to specify a maximum borrowing rate or a maximum true interest cost or TIC. So um, again, that is up to the district to set where you might feel comfortable. Um, or basically where you feel uncomfortable borrowing. So if rates go up above that, the district won't be able to proceed. Uh, and you're hearing from a lot of districts, they are looking um at setting those maximums. Uh, about between four and four and a half percent is what we're hearing from most folks. Uh, and again, there's no minimum saving threshold. It's really just weird districts, each district is comfortable and everyone may come out in a slightly different place. Um, after the resolutions adopted, the plan will be to have everyone send payoff requests to PERS. So part of the process is to. Request the actual amount uh of the of the payoff uh as it will be on August first, when the payoff will be made. And um, PERS requires forty-five days uh to provide those, so that is baked into the schedule. Uh, and does come at a slight upfront cost, about twelve hundred dollars. Uh, and then we will be working on developing the disclosure document, that's the official statement. You may remember seeing that from the refunding that we did. We'll be putting one of those together for the pool. So it gets pretty unwieldy with, you know, we're looking at potentially twenty districts participating. So basically, we put one document together with a little bit of information about every district. And we'll also be obtaining a credit rating for the pool. Uh, and then, you know, through this whole process, you know. Uh, rates are going to be changing, so we looked at that graph, rates are changing all the time. So they could potentially go up, um, or they could go down, but um, you know, you could. Essentially adopt the resolution now, uh, and if the market tails off um or what. Um, you, you are not required to proceed essentially. Until June fifteenth is when there's going to be this final opt-in form that's going to be due from district. So we know exactly what the pool looks like and can market the size correctly. So folks may drop in between now and June fifteenth, depending on when, what happens with the market. Uh, and the bond sale is slated for June thirtieth, um, that would be the date that the rates are actually locked. But we're envisioning um a multi-day kind of sale process. Um, if the size of the pool looks like it could be fairly large. So we may take several days to kind of do pre-marketing and um. Amp up investor interest and then lock those rates um on the thirtieth. And then we have about a month between the the pricing and the closing. And so the rates will be locked on the thirtieth, but no money will change hands until the closing, which is slated for July twenty-ninth. And the reason for that is there is a lot of different closing documents that have to be executed. And with so many borrowers, it takes a little bit longer for everything to get done. So it's about four weeks between those two dates. And then August one is when um the rate credits will actually start. So. Questions? You guys are a quiet crew.
Taking in a lot of information, appreciate it, Lauren. Board, any, any questions for for Lauren or Steve in this matter?
I see a raised hand, actually, let me change my. So I can see you all.
Thank you, Lauren, uh, I was wondering about how reserves um play into the planning process. For like the amount and timing of the uh POBs, like. Do districts create strategies based on, you know, reserves, projected reserves? Um, do they create strategies that, you know, have multi-year investments? Like the example you showed us, the two thousand three and two thousand four, like, did, did the district who did that? Do that intentionally, like the, uh, in two thousand three, they're like, yep, we're going to do it this year, we're going to do it next year. Um, how does that work?
You know, I'm not sure, I was not around in two thousand three and two thousand four. Um, so I can't tell you exactly what happened there. Um, you know, it, maybe uh districts, you know, felt really good from the two thousand three. And then were willing to dip a little more in um the next year since things still looked good. And it is kind of a strategy that I know Park Rose was looking at just a couple of years ago when they were looking at pension bonds. Kind of um diluting that risk by issuing at different points of time. Um, I don't believe they ultimately did that. Um, you know, some districts also, rather than borrow the full amount of the uh UAL, they'll only borrow fifty percent of it. Um, to kind of, so you you're getting potentially some benefit, but minimizing the risk a little. But I think you're also, you're also minimizing the potential for savings there, right? So um, that could be a good option, though, absolutely. Uh, again, there's, there's no set guidance, which I think is is also a bit hard, that it leaves folks to to. Make these decisions for themselves. I know, we're less involved. I know we're less involved on kind of the strategy for setting up, you know, reserves. You know, if, if folks were gonna do that, uh, you know, I had other districts that were like, yeah, well. You know, we will plan to bank our savings on those rate credits, you know. For the first few years and build up a reserve that we could hold on to um, in the future. But they may choose to say do a percentage of that. I, I don't have as much direct knowledge on that front. Uh, we could certainly, you know. Ask other folks. I know Steve's on the OASBO listserv. That could potentially be um, a wealth of information to ask folks what they have done. Um, and, and learn from them, but I, I don't have direct knowledge.
That, that helps me. Yeah, that helps me understand um, the process more. Thank you.
Okay.
Lauren, um, I'm wondering if the size of the pool affects the bond rating or the interest rate at all? If we lose districts out of the pool, does that affect our borrowing rate?
Um, you know, it won't affect the rating, um, but it, it could. Maybe on the margins affect the interest rate, uh, but we're looking at. Potentially a couple of hundred million. And so even if we lose a few, we could still have a sizable pool. And I don't think it'll have a meaningful impact on the interest rates, even if we see, you know, a few districts drop.
Okay, okay.
And you know, some districts may even go on their own. So when. Issued bonds in twenty fifteen and twenty eighteen, uh, they were, were talking about doing the pool. But ultimately, you know, if they had a high enough credit rating, they, there were several that issued on their own. Uh, like that hill, um, you know, that one school district B that was in our, uh, the examples.
Oh, right.
Went on their own. So it is possible to do it on your own. Um, but I think for a lot of districts, when they're all looking at it at the same time, there's certainly benefits for, from doing the pool.
Okay, thank you.
Tom, did you have your hand raised? Put so patiently?
Yeah, yeah, no, I, um, not really a question. I guess you, you, you answered my big question. I'm glad you put the um, the two thousand and eight scenario in there where, where, where we lose, where, you know, a district lose. Twenty percent right off the bat. That's, that's always the, that's the scenario that concerns me. And I, I think it just shows that the. The current low interest rates are um, pretty attractive right now. So I mean, I'm, I, I, I've got a few questions, I think. I think I'll have some more questions. I may get ahold of you or Steve to try to help, help me through them a little bit. Um, but it's a good, good thorough, thorough presentation. Um, I guess the only question is that we, once we lock it in, then there's like a month. I think you have that it, it, until it closes, is it at any time can the, if, you know, interest rates go. Things turn, can the other party back out? Or once we, once we, once we, once we lock it in, can they, is, is, is there, I, there's a thirty day window from where we decide. And then I think it was in, in July, it closes. Can they back out?
Yeah, that's a great question. So um. That period of time is governed by what's called a bond purchase agreement. And that would be signed between all the districts and Piper is the underwriter. And it lays out basically all, all the terms at which we would buy the bonds. Um, and this is signed on the day of pricing.
Okay.
And so it also lays out all of the possible ways that we could terminate and back out of the deal. Um, and it's huge monumental things like a, I think like a declaration of war. Um, or like if the US um, credit rating was downgraded. Um, things that are very rare, um, that could potentially have a really big disruption of the market. The idea being that, you know, we're kind of the middleman between the folks selling the bonds and the investors. And we kind of, it will, the money will sort of pass through us. So if there was a huge market disruption and all those buyers that had signed up. To buy the bonds on the day of pricing all went away. Then we obviously, you know, it would be really bad if we were on the hook for two hundred million dollars and we had no one to buy the bonds. Um, that no one, absolutely no one wants that to happen. Um, and you know, even if there are outs listed. If, if buyers didn't drop, then we would, may not necessarily back out. So there, there is some amount of risk between that um, sale date and the closing date. But it, very rare for something like that to happen. And it again is all outlined very clearly in the purchase agreement.
Yeah, so, so, so it, it, so it has to be a, a pretty catastrophic event. They can't say all the interest rates went up half a percent. We don't. We're not interested. It, it has to be a bigger thing. Okay, good. Right, that answers my question.
There would be, Tom, uh, basically a two-week window, our final declaration on June fifteenth. And the sale happening by June thirtieth, that would be kind of that two-week window where we're. You know, kind of hoping that the, the rates don't change from, you know, much from where they're at. Kind of like what we went through last September, you know, so uh, that, that would be kind of the two-week window. Um, as she, as Lauren mentioned, the, the resolution, the resolution would need to be adopted by April twenty-third. So uh, we would propose to bring that forward at our April twelfth uh, uh, board meeting. Um, and I also believe Lauren, uh, you and Carol and team have determined that the uh, break evens uh, sit uh, rate. Uh, for the two thousand seven uh, investment scenario was about four point five percent. Is that correct?
Yes, yeah, we've been running uh, all of these analyses for again, like twenty-three districts. Um, and so all of those savings percentages are. Uh, very similar between um, the districts. And so when we've run a T I C of four and a half percent, um, that investment scenario three was. Essentially break even.
So I, you know, at this point, I would recommend considering a, a, a true interest cost uh, rate cap of either four or four point two five percent. Um, for your consideration. That, that's kind of what I'm thinking at the moment. You know, as, as you can see from Lauren's presentation and, and is on the, the sheets in our analysis. We borrowed it five point seven three percent and five point four nine percent in two thousand three and two thousand four. Definitely wouldn't feel comfortable going that high, but uh, but we still done well, uh, fortunately. Uh, because we had good early returns uh, in that situation. And we've saved thirty-two and a half percent. Uh, still have eight years to go, but uh, fortunately we've done well.
Yeah, I don't, when those folks, you know, borrowed back in the early two thousands, I don't think anyone thought rates would go this low. And here we are.
Yep. So what I'm gonna do is uh, we'll get Lauren's uh, tonight's presentation posted. Uh, in addition to what we already had. This is kind of a condensed version of what you've already seen. As well as the full Eco Northwest report that, the slide that she showed with the probability factors were from the Eco Northwest report, which is really. The bottom line. I think Monte Carlo is about twenty thousand simulations, if I remember. But I don't know that I posted the full Eco Northwest study, so I will post that and Lauren's uh, presentation as supplemental. Uh, information uh, reports to tonight's presentation on this uh, for this meeting.
So for clarity, Steve, you're asking for us at the April regular meeting. To consider and adopt theoretically a resolution of sort of moving us forward or not. And it's at that point, you would ask us to set a cap on that uh, rate. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanna thank Lauren uh, for the excellent presentation. It's extremely helpful. Uh, she's right, you know, I've seen these for off and on for twenty years. And I, I learned something new every time I see it, so. Uh, definitely feel better about having her here tonight. So thank you so much, Lauren, for your time tonight.
Yeah, thank you. It was nice to see you all and please feel free to reach out if you think of additional questions.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Jonathan, do we need to take action to have a resolute, to authorize Steve to? Go ahead and draft a resolution for our, for our review and, and possible approval next time?
I don't think we need to take action for him to present something to us. It'll be in draft form. Uh, at that point, and that'll be the time that we would discuss it. I believe, Steve, you've already responded with the. No obligation commitment to move to the step required as of today, correct?
I did. So they should have a, a draft resolution for me within the next week. And what other information, other information I need to, you know, to move forward, but they know that we're still interested at this point.
Does that answer your question, Jen? Okay. Well, let's, let's move to our next item, which is our superintendent report. And uh, that will be followed by the superintendent evaluation, wherein Kristen Miles is online as well. And will be facilitating as a consultant during that process. And so uh, we can, we can promote Kristen to panelist really at any time, uh, at this point, Maddie.
Just promoted her.
Thank you. So Scott, you are up.
Well, thanks, Jonathan, and, and thank you, Steve and, and Lauren for that presentation. That's a lot of meaty info and, and um. Well, I just gotta say, um, thank you, Steve, for always looking out after the district for, for savings and. And there's a lot to think about there, so thank you. Um, I have a, I have a couple of announcements or a couple of things I wanna talk about. I'm gonna share the screen right now. And I'm just gonna pull this up. I'd like to talk to you a little bit about an update. That I, uh, as promised, that I would share with you uh, at this board work session. Around the ice storm, the aftermath, and particularly around the trees. Uh, on the campuses of Silver Falls School District facilities. And then I wanna talk about a related topic, which is the uh, my recommendation to you on reconciling the days that we lost. From a five-day closure. So some of this information you've already heard, but this is the first time I've had everybody together. Uh, in a board meeting to be able to present this information as a whole. So, so bear with me if you've heard some of this before, um, but some of the information is new as well. And so I'm gonna go ahead and press present here. Can you guys see that? Okay? Thumbs up. Y'all see that? Okay. And so I wanna talk about four phases and. The first phase is the storm itself. The second phase is uh, the emergency safety response that we had. To the storm. And then the third phase is the post-emergency cleanup. Um, which uh, we're still involved with. And then phase four to me is the most important part. And that is, uh, what are we doing around the issue of uh, the Oak Grove at Mark Twain? Um, that's an issue that I take and am taking very seriously. And I wanna talk to you a little bit about steps forward that we're taking there. Before I get into anything, I wanna be really clear about a couple of things. Um, and number one is, uh. Since I am ultimately responsible for everything that happens in the Silver Falls School District, whether that's positive or negative. Um, hindsight is always twenty-twenty. As educators, we're always involved in what we would call a cycle of inquiry. That is uh, executing our action plan and then reflecting on that and seeing how we can do things better. And then if we make mistakes and owning those mistakes. Um, and I wanna be the first one to tell you as a board that, that I'm sorry. I'm sorry that a couple of things uh, were missed uh, by us. Um, I'm sorry that uh, we didn't realize there were city ordinances around White Oaks. Uh, we had some heavy equipment in an oak grove that we shouldn't have. Um, all of that, we did not know at the time. Uh, but for that, I take full ownership and I just ask for your forgiveness. And I apologize profusely for that. Certainly, that was never our intention. Our intention is always around safety and making places safe for our community. And I just wanna make sure that I lead off with that. I really mean that sincerely. Um, so phase one, uh, all of you know, we were hit by a historic ice, ice storm. And that, there was no part of our school district that was left untouched. Around the entire two hundred fifty square mile district. Some areas were hit harder than others. Uh, but there was no area that was unaffected. And all of you know, because you live uh, in the district boundaries as well, that there was no power internet or phone, either landline or cell. Uh, for, for almost, I would say, uh, a matter of, of not just days, but weeks. Uh, for some communities. Um, and that posed an enormous logistical issue for us, um, that I cannot understate or overstate. I'm sorry. Um, phase two was the immediate response. The immediate response was uh, that uh, I went to visit the, the entire school district on Sunday. Dan and I drove the entire area and made our assessment off of what we saw. And then continued to get reports into Monday. And we had deemed several areas that were completely unsafe. And uh, the decision that I went with was to uh, uh, take every action I could to, to make them safe. And so, um, although we, we did make repeated attempts to contact an arborist, we did go ahead anyway. Um, and that's going back to what I was talking about in the, in the first couple of slides there in, in terms of doing things. Where in hindsight, we, we, we may have been able to wait. Um, and we, we couldn't get in touch with any arborist. We couldn't even get in touch with our own arborist, the Mountain View. Um, and I think some of you, I've, I've spoken to some of you who had uh, the same issues. Uh, with arborists just for private residences. So I just wanna make sure that you know the context there. Uh, that uh, either we got no answer or voicemail boxes were completely uh, full. Uh, but we did get in touch with an excavating company and began work. Uh, one of those sites was Mark Twain. Um, and we had some heavy equipment there that, that um, should not have been there in the Oak Grove. Uh, and in hindsight, uh, maybe we could have had a different solution there. So again, my apologies on that. Uh, we made the executive to set, decision to, to address those key issues right away. And most of that involved the removal of what are called hangers or widowmakers. Um, trees with severely damaged canopies or suffering, trees suffering catastrophic damage. And then phase three, um, we were able to get in touch with an arborist by February twenty-fourth. And then af- integrity tree. And then after that, uh, we have been working with Mountain View Arborist. Uh, Tree Service, who, who we've been working with as, as our official, uh, as the company of record for Silver Falls. Um, and since then, we've been in touch with uh, the city of Silverton. Uh, with regular communication there and, and uh, will be in communication throughout the cleanup process. Um. Which leads us to phase four, which uh, is what will be new information that I wanna share with you. And that is the Oak Grove at Mark Twain specifically. On uh, uh, to- today, uh, Mark, uh. Our arborist, uh, Mountain View started work on the Oak Grove today. Um, the first step is to clean up the hanging branches and debris from the floor of the Oak Grove. Uh, the preserving the existing trees and trimming the canopies, et cetera appropriately. Um, and all of the uh, debris will either be carried out by hand or using light equipment. Again, with, under the supervision of a professional arborist. And this cleanup will likely go into the summer. Um, and then once the weather uh, warms up, we will be getting into the ground restoration. Uh, there will be some low-deep tilling to address the compacted soil. And then the replanning of, of appropriate uh, oak trees or, and or additional native plants, et cetera. And that leads me into the meetings that I've had last week. Um, one of which was with Kyle Palmer. I wanted to have an honest conversation with Kyle about uh, entering into a partnership with the city. And seeing what we could do for that area to, to have a, a conservation focus and to see what we can do to restore that area to. Uh, so the public can enjoy it once again. Um, I met with um, a professional arborist and horticulturist. Um, uh, by the name of Eric Hammond uh, last week as well. And had really just a delightful conversation with him as a brainstorm and a learning opportunity for me. And uh, we talked about a lot of things, uh, one of which is to uh. Enter into forming a partnership um, with uh, various conservation organizations. Number one is the Willamette Partnership. With various conservation organizations. Number one is the Willamette Partnership Plan, which focuses on White Oaks in the Northeast Willamette Valley. And that's where I learned about this concept of, of hubs and spokes. And so. One of the things that interests Eric is the fact that there is not a designated hub of White Oaks. In, in this part of the Northeast Willamette Valley, which would be right in Silverton. So it's a. It's a really neat opportunity to, to do something special with that area as well. And we are working on an initial meeting with, with the WPP and the Marion County Soil and Water District. As well as ODFW, and we're setting up a meeting for next Wednesday. March 31st, we'll meet at the Oak Grove together just to start this process. And, and as you know, these things take time. We're probably looking at braiding the funding here to, to do. You know, to execute a plan that restores the area. Turning it into possibly an education site. And having. Schools involvement as well in the planning process. And I will come back to you with regular updates as far as this is concerned, but. This really was the first step in addressing that issue and. And as the leader of Silver Falls School District, I intend to make it right. And I intend to see this through. And so having said that, I would be more than happy to take questions if you wish.
Thanks Scott. Any, anybody have questions for him on this matter?
I have a question. I wanted to know, do we know how many? Oaks, white oaks that we lost at Mark Twain?
I would have to get you an exact number Lori. But I believe the number's around 40.
Okay.
But I'd be more than happy to get you an exact number on that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question.
Sure, Shelley.
Yeah.
Okay. Can you put up your? Your, uh, thank you. I think it was phase. One or two. Let's see, let's. Let's see, maybe it's phase three. Okay, well, in any case, um. I was wondering about, you've talked a lot about the Mark Twain Oak Grove. What about the trees that were cut down at Scott's Mills School? In particular, the memorial. Tree that was cut down and why has that not been addressed?
So. Sure, Lori, and, and I very well could have added it in tonight's presentation. I'm just using. The Mark Twain Oak Grove since it's a larger area, but we'll certainly the same thing with the Scott's Mills area to, to restore that as well.
Okay. And have you talked to the folks out there or the arborist Eric Hammond about that? And what?
My conversation.
Go out there?
Yeah, my conversations with Eric have right now focused on the Mark Twain Oak Grove. But, but certainly, you know, that, that could absolutely lead to converse more conversations about Scott's Mills area as well.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome, Shelley.
Other questions or comments?
It's one quick comment. I just wanted to thank you Scott for being really collaborative. In your phase four, moving forward with other community organizations, I think. Obviously the storm was devastating and, and hearts are broken over, over very special trees that were lost, but I, I think this is an opportunity for us to come together and. And build something really special and, and. You know, even like you've mentioned Shelley, the school communities, just their whole, the whole way the school and their property looks has changed. But it's a chance for them to engage their students and their communities and their families. So, you know, it is, it was very, very sad, but I, I'm really happy that you're looking at an opportunity to partner. With some of these organizations and really rebuild in a, or restore in a, in a really meaningful way.
Thank you Janet, and. I don't think there's any other way than to go about this in a collaborative fashion and, and. And I think that, you know, we, we've taken a good step forward in that direction. And I'll be back to give you regular updates on this.
So I have another quick question. I agree with Janet, by the way. The other thing I wanted to ask you is what is the plan to further educate? Not only yourself.
Sure.
But. The, you know, the staff that you have on hand about this in the future and, and learn. To work with the city. What those ordinances are, what the codes are. This is a huge learning opportunity for sure. And maybe it can be a better, or lead to a better relationship with the city. In, and in future endeavors and such like that. So I guess, you know, a lot was not known. But yeah, that probably, I'm just asking what you have planned for that.
Well, I, I agree Shelley, and I think a lot of our learning has come directly from our reflection. On what would happen if, if this were to occur again and, and. It's a big wake up call for us and, and I think again, another opportunity as well. To make the most out of the mistakes that, that we've made and to learn from that.
Great. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Shelley.
Thanks Scott. I, one quick comment I'll make, not so much a question, but you know. This was pretty crazy event and. As somebody who personally had 12 Oaks come down just on my place alone, I can appreciate how much. Chaos there probably was. And so. You know, a level of grace being afforded to, I think everybody involved is, is appropriate here. And I appreciate you owning it and learning from it and moving. Forward collaboratively as well. So just a big thank you for, you know, the. How you presented this and how you started it off. So I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you all.
Yeah, Scott, I got a quick comment.
Sure, Tom.
Yeah, I guess I'd like to piggyback both on kind of what Janet and what Jonathan said. About moving. Or with. Something more. Duation, our, our staff's primary concern is the safety of the kid. That's their job, you know, 4,000, 3,000, 3,500 students, staff and everything. That's the primary. Thing. We're not, we're not, we're not a Parks and Service. District. And, and, but yet clearly, and I, and I agree with it, that this grove and trees is pretty special and, and it has value to the community going forward. Forever. So we need, we need to figure out a way to transfer the care and maintenance of that district, of that area. Into. To somebody else whose primary focus is that. Ours is safety of kids and we need. People to, to watch that.
Well, and I think.
With the safety net.
Thank you, Tom.
That, of, of that in mind, I'm quite, yeah. So, so I'm not sure what this is going to look like going forward, but. We need to pass that on to, it's going to look like, but you clearly started the process.
Yeah, thank you, Tom. And I, I couldn't agree more and, and. One of my responsibilities is that I serve at the pleasure of the public in, in Silverton and. And one of, one of my responsibilities I take very seriously is that the public have a big say in how this looks. And so, so I agree and thank you for your comments.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, Devon?
Jonathan? Later. Yeah, I would just recommend maybe. It would be in the best interest of the school district to sell that Oak Grove. Let somebody else manage it. Like Tom said, you know, we're in the business of nurturing and growing kids, not trees. And it's sad to see those trees go, but. Let's put our focus on the kids and maybe get rid of that Oak Grove. To somebody that wants to take care of it like it should be.
Thanks, Ruth.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, so. If I may, I'd like to move on to the, the ice storm closure. And, and sort of the makeup days and how we intend to reconcile those and to give you. My formal recommendation that you will vote on at the April regular board meeting in this. So this is just for your information. Here. And so as you know, we were closed from the 15th to the 19th. That was a decision that we made and I'm glad we made that decision. We need, we needed every last day of that. It's for, for our community to, to begin the, to the cleanup and, and everything else. So. One of the issues, of course, you already know about is the devastating nature of the wildfires that we had. That already ate up nine days. And so when we went to re reconcile the calendar after the wildfires, we had used up all the non-student. Contact days. And so by the time the ice storm hit here. When we are closed for five days, we don't have anywhere else in the calendar to make those up. And so. I just want to make sure that you understand how unique these circumstances are because. We can handle one natural disaster. We did that. It was a, it was an enormous natural disaster. We were able to absorb all those days to reconcile those. But here we are with, with five days that we need to. We need to do something about and my recommendation to you. Is to extend the school year by four student, for in-person student contact days during the week of the 21st through the 25th. And we have an existing MOU memorandum of understanding that outlines Mondays as a. Asynchronous day. That means it's a, it's a teaching day, but not directly between teachers and students. And so we need to make sure that we honor that. And so the teacher grading day, depending on. Conversations that we need to have. With SFEA on whether or not we can move that. Grading day, which was originally scheduled for that Monday. To that Friday. That of course, they have the right to, to negotiate. We have a right to negotiate that with them to present. A plan to them and they have every right, whether or not they want to entertain that. And if not, then we would move the grading day to that Monday. So in other words, we would have four in-person student contact days. With the Monday, which is an instructional day. That would be the five days that we would make up. And as you can see here, the, the proposed. Calendar on the right where you see the closure. And then the student makeup days and then the teacher grading day, which would be moved to a Friday, but that's pending agreement with SFA. If not that, then we, then it will be on the Monday after. And the reason why I'm recommending this to you is because. I and, and my team feel that this is truly what is best for kids. The kids need. As much adult contact time as they can get. And there were 170 days in the adjusted calendar after the wildfires that we made up. That was part of the. Original calendar, which was 170 days as well. And I aim to get us back there. I do believe that it is in the best interest of kids and that is my. Formal recommendation to the board. As an educator and as your superintendent. And so. With having said that. I would be happy to take any questions that you may have.
Thanks Scott. Any, any questions from any of the board members on, on the. Extension being proposed?
Yeah, I, I'm sorry. I kind of, you kind of froze up on my end. So I, I just let me, oh no, that's okay. I think it's probably connection. It happens. Just really quickly, can you just re-say or restate? So the kids would go to school with teacher contact 21st through the 25th. And then the teacher would have grading day potentially on the 28th Monday. Is that correct?
Yes, or if this would be subject to agreement with SFA and the district, we can move reading data that Friday. And, but they, SFA would have to agree to that.
Oh, I see. Okay. Okay. Yeah. Thank you for the clarification. I just didn't hear all of it.
You're welcome, Shelley.
Thanks.
And Scott, is it, is it correct to assume that graduation would still be on June 10th? Is that still the intention for the high school?
Yes, graduation remains the same. Yes.
So seniors would be done the same time. This is for junior, freshman sophomore, or I'm sorry, this is K through 11.
Yeah, K through 11.
Yeah, K through 11. Okay. Okay. So is it my understanding that that would be? Six additional days as opposed to five?
It, it would be five Shelley, the five instructional days and. The, the day on the 29th, or sorry, the 28th would be a grading day.
Okay.
But subject to agreement with SFA, we may be able to move that to Friday.
Very good. Okay. I think the more days. The kids can have with the teachers and. The teachers can have with the kids. I think they want to be with the kids, you know, I think they need the interaction and want it as well. Yeah, I think if we can get them together as much as possible. That would be my thought process at this point, since we've missed so much already. Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you, Shelley.
Yeah, Scott. Yeah, I. Yeah, you know, um, so we, that closure in February, we were. All online.
Yes.
And now at the end, which, which was not the best scenario and, and at the end here, we're going to be adding some actual student in-person contact days.
Yes, that is correct.
I, I know this, yeah, I know this decision isn't going to make a lot of people happy, but I think it's, but it's, it, it's the right thing to do. We're going to get some more in-person. Learning for the kids. It's, it's, it's. It's the right decision.
Thank you, Tom.
I think I'm going to just ditto what Tom said. That was essentially my comment as well. Thanks.
Thank you, Jonathan. Other questions or comments? Okay. And of course I'm at your service and you'll be voting on this as in, at the regular April. Board meeting and of course always happy to, to chat with you. About any questions you may have. So I'm going to exit this screen if you don't mind and. Jonathan, going back to you, I know I'm up on the agenda for the next item. Well, is that how you'd like to proceed?
Yeah. So the superintendent evaluation is next. And I think what we ought to do. Is before we dive in, because I'm not quite sure how long that process will take, let's take a, a brief five minute. Stretch. And we'll jump back into that in, let's, well, I show 8:28 PM. Let's do target 33, so five minutes. And we'll, we'll get rolling. All right. I show it's five minutes past, while it's 8:33, we are still waiting on, it looks like. Couple of board members. So let's just wait another minute. There's her. There's Tom and I think. And there's Janet. Okay. Well, Kristen, I appreciate your patience and I want you to kick us off here with the, the process that we. Are going to follow for this evaluation.
Okay. Hi, thanks. Thanks Jonathan. Hi, everybody. Nice to see you again. Last time I saw you, I think I was doing the charter school renewals for your charter school. So nice to see you again. So thank you all for sending in your evaluations. What I have done is compile everybody's answers. So hoping to save us a little bit of time tonight. We want to be. Expedient and efficient with our time, but yet also really thoughtful in the process. So. So what I've done is, is, and I'll show you in a moment, compile everybody's scores and everybody's comments. Now. You are a very comment-y bunch. So when I have you read comments tonight, you're going to be reading for a little while. But what I'm going to ask you to do for each standard is obviously we're going to look at the scores, but then as you read comments, we're going to find themes. But then, as you read comments, we're going to find themes and you're going to identify those themes. And those themes are going to then become the encapsulation of of what you want to give to Scott. Now, obviously, he's here, he's hearing your discussion. But when you finalize this, we just want to identify the theme so that you can come to a one voice message. Because your evaluation of your superintendent is meant to be a one-board voice message. So. What I'm going to do now is go ahead and show you, we're going to, we're going to skip around a little bit. What I like to do is start with the low-hanging fruit. We look at what you most agreed on, come to scores quickly, we can knock a couple off. I will say that in general, if we, most boards, I do this a lot, and most boards can come to consensus, even if their scores varied initially. If we reach a point where there where folks are really sticking with their with their scores, we can't come to consensus. I will say that normally, the majority gets the score. And we make sure that, you know, the comments, which are not that divergent. The comments reflect the entirety of the board. If if you want to look at it another way, that's fine. But I really advise against giving partial or half scores, because that's not a clear message to your superintendent. So anyway, the the gist of it is really in the comments anyway. So we're going to start with standard one, but first, any questions before we go ahead and dive in? Okay, we're going to start with standard one. It takes up more than one page. So what I'm going to do is ask you to read one whole page and then sort of give me a thumbs up or something when you're done. And when everybody's done, I'll flip to the second one. So I'm going to share my screen. Okay. Go ahead and read. You all are writers. It's fantastic.
Kristen, is there any way to make it a tiny bit bigger without losing anything?
I can make it bigger, but we'll just, it'll take up more than than one page. So that's that's. Now, let me make it bigger.
It's very small on my screen. I apologize.
Okay, is that better?
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, so just go ahead and give me a thumbs up when you're done with this. We'll keep scrolling. Assuming you've all gotten past the first couple of paragraphs, I'm going to keep scrolling. And just so you know, I should have said this ahead of time, I just copy pasted everybody's answers. So nothing has been changed. All of your original words should be there.
These are all for standard number one.
Is that correct? Yeah, this is all standard one.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to go ahead and scroll a little bit. Are you all that far? Okay. Scrolling again. Oh, it's the end. Okay, everybody have an opportunity to. Mostly finish or finish. I'm seeing heads nodding. Okay, so we're going to go back up to the top here. And let's look at, before I ask you for themes, let's look at scores. The the majority of you, six out of seven gave Scott a four and one gave a three. How would you feel? I don't I don't know who gave the three. I didn't write anybody's names down. I'm wondering if there's some discussion here, if our three wants to talk about that? Or if there's, if if you can come to consensus on four, given the majority of you gave four. Thoughts on that? Yeah, Jennifer.
I have a question just about process tonight, because I know that Scott. Is Scott going to talk about his performance in these areas before we land on scores?
So you all got his self-evaluation, right? So we can do it one of two ways. If you've all had a chance to process that, that should have gone into what, how you rated. You can do it one of two ways. We can go through one by one, and Scott can talk a little bit about how he addressed this in his self-evaluation. Or you can go through the whole thing and have him respond at the end.
Okay.
What would you prefer?
Well, one of the challenges with this process. I think in great part because of a lot of other factors going on, not the least of which was the ice storm in the aftermath. But we didn't actually get his until right about the time we were submitting ours. So there wasn't really good staging of of things in this particular case. Okay, if Scott would like to address each of these as we go and talk to his bullet points briefly as we do go through this, I think there's merit to that. It may help us on track for consensus.
That's great, yeah. Especially if you haven't had an an opportunity really to to digest with Scott. So I think that'd be a great idea. So Scott, if you're prepared.
Yes, actually, I was prepared to deliver the presentation as a whole. I just need a minute to pull this up.
Okay.
And but it's no, no problem at all.
Did you have something you wanted to share on screen? Because I can stop sharing. Is that, was it a presentation that you had or did you want to just?
It was.
Okay, I can stop sharing if you'd like to do that. That might, that might work out better before we, before you start. I mean, you've compiled, but let me stop sharing so that you can share yours.
Would you like me to share each one individually and allow you to present what the board is? Or would you like me to go through all of it right?
What I'm thinking at this point, unless anybody disagrees with this, is that you could just do the whole thing.
Okay.
We can go through. Does that sound about right?
Fair enough.
And we don't have to go back and forth.
So I'm just going to pull it up real quick. And share screen here. Exit out. All right. Can you all see that thumbs up? Okay, and so I just wanted to start out by mentioning a couple of things. Again, this is my first self-evaluation as a superintendent. It's my what's going on the towards the end of my first year as a superintendent. And it's been quite a year, but I wanted to give some, just some thoughts to consider. First of all, I wanted this evaluation to be done in open session publicly. For one very important reason, no other reason than my number one expectation. I have twelve of them for leaders in Silver Falls School District. And the first one is we model giving and receiving feedback, whether that's positive or negative. And so I, as the lead learner in Silver Falls, as the lead educator in Silver Falls, need to always make sure that I'm leading by example. And so that's really the basis behind wanting to do this in open session. Just some other context is that we're in a global pandemic and there's no playbook for any of this. Every single one of the hundred ninety-seven or so. Superintendents in the state of Oregon is going through this pandemic for the first time. And no one has previous experience. We've been constantly grappling with frequent executive orders from the governor and the changing guidance from O D E and revisions from O H A. And and we've managed to do those with a great amount of grace and and skill. And I would can only credit the leaders that we have in the Silver Falls School District for making that happen. The wildfires and the most recent and historic ice storms have just added to the complexity of what we're already experiencing in the pandemic. We're literally in a, at one point, we're in a triple crisis. And that's just layered on a whole other complexity of trauma and hardships for our students and their families. And the other thing, and I think it's really important to mention, that the COSA and OSBA superintendent performance standards weren't written with any of this in mind. And so I think that's something to to keep in mind. I I think that the paradigm shift in leadership, we will see evolve after we get out of this global crisis. And who knows, that may translate into new standards as well. So in visionary leadership. I think there's just a couple of things that I wrote down, and many of these can be added into. To just about any domain, I think you can make an argument for. But one of the things I noticed right off the bat was the need to. Reconfigure both Mark Twain and Robert Frost. We have a K two school and a three-five school, both elementary in town, and had to bring that into the modern era. And the board had done some work on that beforehand and 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 saw the value in that. And then we proceeded to get that plan approved. And then we went about. Creating a process to draw a boundary in town, which was a monumental effort to get that done. And and what we wanted to come out of that was a transparent process and set up a work group of community members that could truly own their recommendation to the board. And we were able to achieve that. From the get-go and coming to the central office, I had in mind. Certain adjustments I wanted to make to the leadership structure in Silver Falls School District. And that just came from all of my conversations, I think, one hundred sixty-three one-on-one conversations before I even started in Silver Falls School District, which enabled me to start developing a plan. And so far, we've been pretty successful with that and getting people into different positions to lead different efforts. And it's turned out to be a decision that's really worked well for us. Now, no matter how, no matter people's feelings about comprehensive distance learning, the fact of the matter was, we had to create a plan and implement that plan. And we were able to do that. We've been in that plan ever up until this month. And I would say that that is probably what's taken up the majority of lease, my time in my team's time and and ensuring that that. Plan for distance learning. Was was implemented to the best of our ability. And I guess the other, the other thing I wanted to say about standard one is that. We rebooted the process for the long-range facilities planning committee. And I really see that in terms of the vision of Silver Falls as the most important. Because that is work that will affect generations to come of Silverton and Silver Falls children. And so that gives you a little bit of information about about standard one. Ethics and professional norms, we've done a lot of work around norming in this district. In fact, that all started coming into the district and working with our school leaders and administrators around the expectations that I have. I have twelve of them. And I'm happy to share them with the board. I didn't want to take up space here and list them all out, but the number one most important expectation is expectation number one. And that is we model giving and receiving feedback. And we do that whether it's positive feedback or negative feedback. We implemented norms-based meetings with time tasks, time task agendas. For our weekly administrator meetings and for our superintendent's cabinet meetings. And all of those administrator meetings are academically focused. And they're transparent and respectful of participants' valuable time. We start on the minute and we end on the minute. Redesigned a clear decision-making structure. And this was all based on feedback and consensus from my cabinet and forming an extended cabinet as well, made up of principal representatives. So they have a say in in the decision-making process as well. And then that goes down to the administrator teams and also where appropriate, down to our employee associations as well. They're a very necessary part of our professional ecosystem, as I like to describe it. And. And I I think it's it's worked out pretty well for us this year. We've implemented weekly communications meetings with our licensed association with S F E A. And that has proven to be very productive for us in building relationships with with our association. And I'd like to credit Dan Bush for a lot of that and and the work that he did before I even got here. It's really been phenomenal work, and we certainly appreciate our associations for working with us as well. I would say on the whole, I meet with board members about once a week, because I have them so wrapped up in different committees and work groups and and everything else. That it 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 basically evens out my conversations with each of you. And I I enjoy enjoy each of those in different formats. And I also have a listening session once a week for all five hundred employees if they wish to attend. And that's very, very important. To have that venue for teachers to come once a week and give their feedback. And. Sorry. So inclusive school district. Culture. We have a new system for hiring instructional leaders in this district, school leaders. And that is a process that I brought with me from my current. Assignment. And so far, we've implemented that. It's an eight-to-nine-stage process, which gives us observable data, which goes back to a standard that we predetermined. And we do not measure candidates off of each other relative to each other. We assess candidate skills relative to a predetermined standard. And so that has worked out pretty well for us. We have hired a high school principal that meets that standard. And on Wednesday, we are going into the case study round, which is round three of the selection process for one of our K eight schools and our in-town elementary school. Where we have five candidates, four women and one man. And because we're and we're looking for diverse workforce, of course, we made it diverse higher with our high school principal. And we also intend, and my goal is to have a gender balance among our school leaders as well. We're starting to move all equity-based initiatives under the umbrella of teaching and learning. That's where it should live. Everything that we do, teaching and learning, is the engine that drives us. It's the wind in our sails and and all of that, all of our equity work will be under the general education, teaching, learning umbrella. We're continue to work with analyzing our achievement gap, although that's been difficult in a remote environment, but that will be a huge part of our work going forward. We've just established cohort number one of our teacher instructional leadership. Group, and we had sixteen applicants. And we just met about the applicants this morning. And we will be informing those candidates going forward, and that will make up our first group of teacher leaders in the district. And our goal is to form a consistent pipeline or conduit of different pathways to leadership, whether that's administration or teachers on special assignment or or teacher leaders. Going forward in this district, it's really important that we build capacity at every level. The last point I wanted to make in and standard four is really the most important. And it is the cornerstone of of my work as an educator in my career. And that is implementing a standards-based instructional model. that is what we would also call guaranteed and viable curriculum, which means that no matter which teacher child has, they have universal access to standards-based teaching and learning and standards-based assessment opportunities. That's a huge part of my work. We're in year number one, just finishing year number one of having teacher teams, what we would call a projection map, the, the common core standards along a continuum of time. So we know how many instructional days we'll need for each unit. And it's got the balance of autonomy and fidelity. So, so as a district, we set, this is how many standards we need to teach in instructional year to make that commitment to our community that say a fourth grader is receiving a full fourth grade education in an instructional year. And then, then the autonomy comes when we turn the units over to schools and they develop those units. And we also hand over the minimum assessment that they can then add to. So, so it's sort of that marriage between autonomy and fidelity and sort of growing it from the ground up, protecting that work from the top down. So it's, it's a mix of both. In terms of communication, communication plan, a game changer for us this year has been parent square. We've really ramped up our communication plan. Our communications coordinator, Derek McAlfreshe, has really risen to the challenge. And I would say we've gotten, we continue to receive constructive feedback of how we can communicate better. But communication is a cornerstone, at least as for myself in the office of the superintendent, as well as working on best practices and communication district-wide. And continuing to build other relationships outside of the district. I just went over some of those, just with our challenge with restoring our oak grove as well. But there are many others. Continuing to advocate within my superintendent's group for for consistent ODE guidance and where it is that we see issues. This is an ongoing thing for us and will continue. I think I already mentioned the feedback session that I have once a week for all of our employees, if they wish. I think we had 90, 90 at last Thursday's meeting. And that's in good times and bad. So every week on Thursdays at 3:30, I will be in one place and that's on the Teachers Rock channel on Google Meet. And whether we have 200 attendees or, or 10, we'll be there every week. It's a very, very vital part of, of transforming an organization into open practice. And it's turned out to, to work, work pretty well for us. Under effective organizational management, I think I already went over the principal selection process. That is a process, a scientific process again, that mitigates the risk of, of hiring leaders who might not be a good fit. Now that we've implemented that for our leaders, we will be walking that down to hiring teachers and hiring our classified employees eventually as well. There is a scientific way and a systematic way to go about hiring so that we get the data that we need to make certain that the employees that we bring on to Silver Falls have the privilege to, to work with our kids and that we're making the best decisions possible based upon the data that we have. Each administrator in Silver Falls School District has an instructional leadership coach. And we are working with an organization called Educational Excellence. I have a coach too, just to model giving and receiving feedback and leading by example. And every other administrator in the district has theirs too. And they have certain coaching sessions that they need to attend. And it's, it's done virtually. And I don't receive the feedback that they talk to their coach about, but I do see who's been attending their sessions and who hasn't. And we've had a terrific success rate with attendance as well. And I think what our administrators would tell you is that it's highly valuable time as well, in a very trusting relationship, because they have input on who they wanted their coaches to be. And that came out of our original group dynamics training back in, I believe it was October. I talked about the Leadership Academy as well and the group dynamics training. I'm in the process of developing our Leadership Institute for the summer. I'd had to take a backseat, given all the wild things that have happened the past couple of months. But we will take, be taking the event formerly known as the Admin Retreat and, and evolving that into what we will call the Summer Leadership Institute. And that will be for administrators and all of our teacher leaders and classified employees in leadership positions. It will be a multiple day and we will spend one full day together, only talking about universal strategies of what good leadership looks like. And all of you are invited to, so just know that I'm not good at taking no for an answer there. And, and I'm sure you'll find it very productive and enjoyable as well. We completed the first year of our five-year plan to implement standards-based instructional design, like I mentioned before. And our weekly communications meetings. And for effective financial management, I, I want to be the first one to say how blessed I am to work with our Director of Finance and Operations, Steve Nielsen. He has been just a, an absolute joy to work with. He's an outstanding professional and an even better human being. And the thing that I've appreciated most about Steve is his ability to take really complicated concepts and explain them to a human of average intelligence such as myself. And a couple of those, the, the big ticket items that we've been working on together, courses that exploring the pension obligation bond, the SIA funding, which we just found out we're funded at two and a half million dollars for next year, which is really great. And we've prioritized a Sequoia Falls Academy for that. And then right now we're navigating through the federal financial resources of ESAR. And we will be getting ESAR $3 as well. And that's all part of the American Rescue Plan and receiving a boatload of money for summer programs. We will not have a shortage of financial resources to help support our kids going forward. I think that the issue is going to be finding enough teachers to, to teach during the summer. And that will be a challenge for us. And then credit also to Steve for setting up the superintendent's financial work group. And Janet and Jonathan are a part of that work group as well. And the policy and governance, I would say, one of the, the many work groups that we've set up, superintendent's work groups that I enjoy the most is our policy work group. I will be going over a couple of, four or five policies tonight. And I can't say enough about not only our board members that are in that policy group, Tom, Shelley and Lori, but maybe even more importantly, two community members that have really, really stepped up and supported us. And that's Dixon Bledsoe and Don Tacker as well. It's just a joy to work with them both. And I think as a group, I think we've found that time very productive and essential. There is no way this work could get done in isolation. And let's see. I talked about sort of the contact I have with each of you as board members on a weekly basis. And what we've tried to do is, is implement a no surprises culture here in Silver Falls. And, and I've been eternally grateful to each, each of you as my seven bosses for always being willing to to adhere to, to this, this concept of, of at least letting me know of, of certain concerns that come your way in a timely fashion. And I try to respond in kind to you. And I think it just makes for a really collaborative environment. And, you know, even though we've been through a lot of difficult things as a district, I would say as a group, I enjoy working with each one of you very much. One of the things that's also different this year, and maybe this could have gone under the first standard under visionary leadership, but we, we have really expanded the role of our Assistant Superintendent Dan Bush. Dan is a critical player in, in the execution of our strategic plan. And Dan has direct contact with, with board members that is new in Silver Falls. In the past, assistant superintendents have been kept at arms length for the board. And I don't, I don't see the value in that. And that's a personal thing, professional thing with me. That Dan has the freedom to interact with the board as he sees fit. And maybe even more importantly, Dan is freed up to build the capacity and focus, focus on building that capacity with our other leaders as well. So that's a tremendous help to me. We've also expanded the roles and responsibilities of Steve Nielsen, not just as a business manager anymore, but as a Director of Finance and Operations. Steve handles all manner of things relative to the district office with operational things such as transportation, facilities management. Steve's been an enormous part of the long-range facilities planning committee. And this is all in addition to his normal day job, if you will, of keeping track of all that district's finances as well. So for Dan and Steve, I'm eternally grateful. And the same obviously would go to our, our other two cabinet members, Dana Peterson, our Director of Special Ed, and Leslie Roach, our Director of Teaching and Learning. I simply could not do any of this that I've talked about this evening without them working closely with me. They deserve the credit 100%. So with that, that basically takes us through the leadership standards. There's plenty more I could talk about with that, but I hope that gives you just a taste. And I can, I can stop the screen share here.
Anybody have any questions for Scott before we go on or comments or anything? Shelley?
I just have a quick question for you, Scott. We are receiving funds from the state for summer. Yes. How much money is our district receiving?
So, so off the top of my head, I'm, what Dan and I say never to do in a public setting, which is on a topic, right Dan? Freestyle. But I believe the state is getting, don't quote me per se, 150 million.
Right.
I know the exact percentage of what that boils down to with Silver Falls, but it's non-competitive. And so
Oh, okay.
To fill out an application to compete for these funds, we'll be given the percentage of funds relative to our size.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Cause I did read an article about that in the, I think it was the Oregonian, maybe. And they did, they did specifically talk about other districts and how much they were getting. And I thought, oh, you know, what's the percentage there? And I didn't, it wasn't that clear. So I wanted to ask you about that. So anyway, that was just a reminder when you mentioned that. So that's it.
The issue won't, the issue won't be the money this summer. The issue will be finding
The teachers.
Especially after this year. So, but I'll come back to you with a plan for that.
Okay. Sounds great. Thanks so much.
You're welcome. Other questions, comments?
Okay. Seeing none. And of course Scott is here, you can stop and ask him a question if you need to. Thank you for that, Scott. All right. So let me go ahead and reshare my screen. And with that all being said, I'm assuming you can see this, right? Okay, great. So, and I also put Scott's own evaluation number, not, not his comments, but his evaluation score of himself, just so you've got that as reference. Is there any reason that you as a group couldn't or wouldn't want to land on four as a score? Before we get to themes. Okay.
Well, I'll say I have no issue with, with moving forward as a four, if that helps.
I see a lot of heads nodding.
I'm good with four.
Okay. All right. I'm going to put four there. So what are some of the themes that you saw in the comments? What, what are a few? We, we won't get super long and detailed because you have that over here on the left. But what are the things that, that are, are concise message that you get out of this that you would want to put forward? Things that appeared a number of times. Shelley?
I think one of the things that I read through all of this is that he that he includes a diverse group of people and stakeholders. I, I feel like I read that multiple times. He always brought in, you know, people from the community, board members. Everybody said, everybody said that in one way or another. So, you know, I think that, that, that's one of the biggest topics that are, or themes that I saw throughout reading that. So.
And in district decisions, is that what you would?
I, I think in not only just district decisions, but I think in all, almost all of his, like he brings in his cabinet members. He, you know, for certain, you know, he brings in different people for policy, for work groups, for committees, for, you know, it, it's, it's the whole. It's, yeah, the whole district, I suppose, and what that, what that encompasses under that umbrella of the district. So, yeah.
Great. I see heads nod. That seems to resonate with other folks. Great. Other, Jennifer?
Well, one thing that folks may have experienced going through the standards and then, you know, writing comments and thinking about all of the actions Scott has taken and how they fit into each of the, you know, standards descriptors. You might have realized that the, some of the same things fit in multiple standards. Like I wrote maybe the standards-based curriculum mapping work in maybe all of the standards. And not just that, there were, there were other things too. Like, you know, the hiring practices and protocols. I think that that to me really speaks to the level of vision that Scott has because he knows what levers to press in order to get the biggest outcome for our students. And I, I think that that's super visionary and super focused. And I just wanted to, I don't know how you, it's like metacogniting on, on these things. But yeah, just the idea that, that he has really focused on the big, the big things to get big returns on investments for our students.
How's that? Does that work for you?
Sure.
Okay. Janet, did you?
Yeah, I was going to say, he's managed to make progress on long-term goals. Despite a lot of really big, short-term obstacles. Like natural disasters and plagues and, you know. And then I'd love to add another one, which is, he just has a very, he has high expectations for himself and others.
Okay. Anything anyone would add? This is, this is a good sort of concise encapsulation of what you all said. We wouldn't want to get too wordy or we would just be the whole thing. But is there anything that is really key that is missing out of this one that wouldn't also be covered in another one per se?
I think a word that comes to my mind is action. And I, you know, vision is one thing, but without action, it's nothing. So I think if we can throw the word action somewhere in one of these, maybe that second one, yeah, that'd be, that'd be good.
Good. Thank you. And I will point out something Scott said that, that I also wanted to emphasize that. And, and I'm doing a lot of these right now. And I, and I'm sure you have this in mind, but it is a very contextual year. And, and I noticed this in your, in your comments that, you know, given the circumstances and, and those are showing up everywhere. So it is just important to recognize that this year has been extraordinary. And, and Scott's right, we did not collaborate with COSA and write this knowing what was coming at us at all. And so, so you may, if you get to a point where you either want to de-emphasize some standards or really, or, or really consider them in context, they may not 100% line up with a regular year. Again, I don't see a lot of extreme divergence in, in your stuff, but just want to put that out there. Okay. Should we move on? That was pretty low hanging fruit. All right. We're going to move on to number two. And I'm going to ask you to read again. This is one page, but, but it's bigger. So we'll, we'll keep scrolling. So go ahead and give me the, the thumbs up when you have read. I'm going to go ahead and scroll a little bit. See if we can get to the bottom. Yep. That's the end of it. Okay. How's everybody doing? Pretty much there. Okay. Looks like everybody's done. All right. We have the same scores here. We have six fours and a three. So I'm going to ask you the same question. Is there any objection to or any reason why you wouldn't land on a four? Or wouldn't agree to do that? Not seeing any. Okay. What are the themes that you picked up on?
Ethical. Integrity. Trust, collaboration. Clear expectations. Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Leads by example.
Other thoughts?
Thoughtful and discerning.
Jennifer, did you have something?
Yeah, I think that, that Scott alluded to this in his presentation or, you know, presented about it. But having really clear professional norms for his administrative team seems to really support the standard of ethics and professional, oh, it is professional norms. That's what it says in the standards. But from the beginning of the year, he communicated with the board what his, you know, standards were and has looped back consistently throughout the year with giving us links to like agendas, administrative team agendas, et cetera, that show us that that's not just talk, that that is actually a plan and he follows through on the plan.
I can spell. Never type worse than when you're typing in front of an audience. Oh my. Okay. That's about that. Shelley?
So Jennifer's thought, if I could kind of, that's kind of the idea that I had, but can I add just a little more to that? He not only has clear professional norms for his administrative team, he has clear professional norms for everybody in this district. For board members, all the way, I mean, for whatever meetings he has or committees or work groups. It is, I mean, it's from board members to, you know, our policy work groups, to committees, to, it, it, it's, it's everybody. It's, it's the union, it's SFBA, classifieds to everybody. So, yeah, I just wanted to put that a little more detail in there because I think it's important to, to recognize that specifically, I, yeah, I don't know. I just think that was important to, to have that in there as well.
Jennifer?
Um, one of the things that I think maybe, I don't want to say more important, but along with clear expectations and follow-through, I think the idea is that, I mean, Scott's mentioned, he just, he, he, we don't have to guess at it. He tells us, you know, he's like, I'm doing this to create a predictable environment because predictability builds trust. And so I think that that is super ethical in, in the sense of setting the, 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 laying the groundwork for good work to happen that supports students. I, I, I guess that's just, I wanted to be really explicit with the idea of predictability and trust in this standard. Not sure I'm expressing myself super well, but wanted to put that out there.
That's great. Other thoughts on this one? Does that capture your ideas? Okay. Seeing none. Should keep moving? Okay. I'm going to skip to seven because again, we have a little more agreement here. Excuse me while I scroll. This is effective financial management. Now, I wanted to show you this one because it's threes and fours, but we also had a couple of NAs for folks that didn't feel like this could be measured in this year. So I think there's the, I'm going to encourage discussion about that. I have had boards that have determined, I had one last week that determined that's, that some standards can't be fairly measured in the context. I think you've got a couple of folks that think that. So I'll just ask you to read and, and then we'll discuss. So I think this is multiple pages. So let me know. Well, just more than one, not, not like three.
Yeah, I was, I, yeah, I was one of the, the NAs and it's, I was, I was the third one down. And it's, it's basically, basically what I said, it, it's such an abnormal year that it's really hard to, to really apply, you know? And, and, and the financial management is about student outcomes, not, you know, stuff that we're seeing now. So I want, I want to see how it is applied to student outcomes going forward. That's my, that's my thought. I think you're doing great, but, but it just, I can't really base the standard. So.
Thank you.
But if, if, if other folks disagree, that's fine. You know, they, they can rate, so.
I don't, I don't disagree, but I think I got confused with it because I know that he works alongside Steve. And so I, I wasn't sure how to quantify the area, the, the, the question and the section. So I just wanted to say that. I'm very happy, but that's where I hit, I guess, a speed bump. So.
Yeah. Scroll a little bit.
I guess I'll share my two cents here while people are finishing up. You know, I, I looked at it this way, you know, the specific descriptors might be hard to go after, but on principle, under the heading of effective financial management, I had no issues. I felt he met expectations and rated him a three accordingly. And I do agree, I think Steve's outstanding. Kudos to Steve. And Scott even mentioned it during his own presentation. And, you know, he's, he's an extremely valuable member of the district. And, you know, one of Scott's jobs is making sure Steve is, is here helping us be successful. And so a good leader, of course, retains good employees and he's been able to do that. So kudos.
Everybody done with that last paragraph? Still reading? Okay. So given, this is just a, a little complex. So we've got three threes, couple of fours and a couple of, of folks that felt it wasn't, that they weren't going to rate this time. So what are your thoughts about where this lands?
I'm happy to do, I was a four. I'm, I, I gave a four mostly for, well, I, I wrote a lot. People can, can read it, but it is, I do understand the issue because there was a standard and then three bullets, right? And one of those bullets is not, we, we haven't gone through a full budget cycle yet. So it was really difficult to land on that. In my world of using standards and descriptors, you know that the descriptors don't always fit everything perfectly. So I was comfortable with a four because I think that, you know, we've had extremely capable and even creative worked around the finances in our district. And then I agree with Jonathan that, you know, recognizing that our business, our finance director is, is really good at what he does and even expanding his duties this year. I think that that's a super strong move. And so all of those things factored into my four, even though there's not bullet points that exactly describe all of those things. So I did give a four, but I am also, I understand, I could go, you know, with support of three because we haven't, you know, had that full budget cycle. And this has been an extraordinary year in, in the sense that making the connection between budget and strategic plan might not have been super high priority because we had all these other things going on. So, yeah, that's how I feel about it.
That would put us at majority three. Is there any argument against three? And, and keep in mind, a three is also a good score, right? You have high expectations and to say that your superintendent meets those is, is a, is a very good thing. I don't see any arguments. Okay. So what are the themes that you saw here? One of the things I heard you say is that he works very well with your, with your, okay, what is Steve's title?
Director of Finance?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think it's Director of Finance and Operations.
Yeah.
I mean, he's, it's
That's correct.
Yeah. It's a big deal.
It is.
Let's, let's give him what he, what he's, what he's doing it at. So that's title.
I think what it reflects in part, Kristin, is that well, as I see it anyway, Scott hires good people and then trusts them to do their work, trusts them to do their jobs and relies on them to be experts. And, and uses them as resources really effectively. So, yeah.
Kristin? Yeah. And what comes to me in this standard is that Scott is very good at delegating. And as a person in leadership, sometimes they find themselves hard to give up that control. But that's actually the key to a good leader is to give up that control and give it to those who are best suited for it. I don't know if that makes sense, but.
Cannot do it all? Good. What else? Do you want to note that an entire budget cycle has not been completed as context?
Yes.
Okay.
I would.
Yeah. Oh, I, I said too many yets. There we go. Anything else here? Does this capture your thoughts? Okay. All right. Let's move on to eight. We're going to look at policy governance and advocacy. You can see we've got four, three fours and four threes. All right. I'm going to scroll a bit. Going to scroll a little more. And that's the end. So what are your thoughts fours and threes? Cause we're pretty split here and, and, but, but some of this conversation is also calibration, right? Somebody's four, maybe somebody else's three. You never know. So what are your, what are your thoughts on this?
Kristin, I didn't get to the very
Sorry Jennifer.
It's okay.
Okay. So what were your thoughts when you were scoring? What's your, who wants to share their rationale?
Well, I'll weigh in on a, on a thought that I have, which is, you, you talked about calibration. I suspect that is an important factor. You know, I, I manage people at a company at a corporate level and do these types of reviews frequently and, you know, giving out, in this case, what would be a four or exceeding, you know, all expectations kind of category is hard to come by. So I, I reserve them for the areas I think they're truly outstanding in. And I think a three, as you said earlier, is, is a very good score as well. And so for me, I'm a three here. It's, there's room for growth. There's areas where there wasn't even an opportunity yet to exercise all of his skills necessarily in this area. So for me, that's the reason for my three.
Thank you. Fours thoughts?
Um, so I'll just read what I wrote. I, I wrote, I think there's plenty of room for growth around this standard, but I'm extending my highest rating to recognize the skill Scott has demonstrated in leading the board to be partners in collaborative governance. He is skillfully selected to place his focus there and impact. So I agree that I think there is room for growth for sure. And I think this is maybe where Scott's made one of, well, I can't say biggest impact, but it's, he's, he's been super impactful in this area. So I just felt like a three wasn't enough to communicate that. But I, I can, I could land on a three if, if that's what the will of the board is.
And it's funny, I was just gonna say, I could also go with a four. So we can decide which way we want to go.
One of the things we can do is I can capture your thoughts and then we can look at what do the, what score do those thoughts tend to merit? That's sometimes how we decide. So let's, let's do that. Let's talk to me about your, the themes that you saw, the things that you'd want to say, and then we'll come back to the score.
A lot of comments about his relationship with the board being positive. Very good, excellent, different words like that.
What else did you see?
I think inviting board members to participate where, where it's appropriate. So they could really get a deeper understanding of how the district runs. I think that's valuable.
I could never spell appropriate right on the first go around or participate, apparently. There we go.
Okay. Can you scroll down just a little bit to, just to refresh the bottom portion of the, oh, thank you. Yeah, that's great.
If I'm not mistaken, I think I've seen three talks about room for growth. So maybe there's some comment threads there. I, I don't have all of them in front of me at the same time, but I think I saw that three times.
Yeah. And I, the word room for, or the phrase room for growth can mean a lot of different things. I don't have any specific recommendations for room, you know, for growth areas at this point. And I think maybe that's why I landed on a four. Obviously the advocacy piece. Well, that's happened. So I, I don't know. I, I don't know what I'm trying to say.
So what else did you see that you'd want to say as a board?
I, I think he's led us towards collaborative, towards collaborative governance in the whole district, not just the board, but all stakeholders really. And that is huge, like the K5 reconfiguration and, and boundary work that happened, that was a really model process. And I think that that fits under the idea of collaborative governance, even though it transcends really the board, board work. I mean, we were there for part of it. But just all throughout the, the district, he's been leading stakeholders to participate in authentic, meaningful ways, which, yeah, to me, that, that, that's why I gave, I gave a four. And again, I don't, I'm not, I can be flexible, but I just wanted to put those ideas on there.
That work for folks?
Yeah, I personally feel that given the amount of time that he has been in the district and some of the, you know, catastrophic situations that he's faced, I give him a four. What I appreciate greatly is that he's making the effort through collaboration to kind of lifting the lid from the feeling of things being more compartmentalized and isolated in the district. And I believe that there has really been a nice effort to open the blinds and, and letting more light into the district. Poetic, but that's the best I can do. Thank you.
Nothing wrong with poetry, compartmentalization.
I wanted to mention, I agree with, with what has been said, but not much has been said about policy. And, you know, he came to this district with a massive backlog of policy that needed to be updated, over 250 policies that have not been updated in our district. And he has jumped right into the deep end of that, created a very diverse policy work group and understands the importance of getting not only those policies updated, but getting the language correct. So it reflects the environment of, you know, current, the current district, the current district environment. You know, he, he was not afraid. I mean, he, he just tackled that thing like a defensive end, tackle the quarterback. I mean, it, it just was, it's, it's, and we're working hard on that. I'm super impressed by that. And, you know, I gave him a four because he deserves that. Not only with policy, but with what, you know, other board members have said about governance and advocacy. I mean, he advocated for getting these policies done. It's just, he's so good at it. It's, it's hard to put it into words sometimes because if you, he's just, he's excellent. He's above and beyond in this, in this standard.
Yeah. And I was, I was gonna say, I was one of the threes only because of the, I was looking specifically at sort of the, the, not the collaborative governance, because I totally agree with Jennifer on that. I was thinking I was looking more limited at like interaction with the board and so forth. And so encouraging him to be a little bit more forthcoming, a little bit more confident in contributing to our thought process. And I think his, his, him being very careful, coming from being, this being the first year in this position, learning who his board members are, feeling safe, developing trust, building trust. So I really can't fault that. I just wanted to encourage him to do more. And so I would be more than happy to revise my three to a four, given that I think it's an area of growth, but certainly not an area of criticism, if that, if that makes sense as a, as a distinguishing.
Yeah, it does to me, Janet, because it's developmentally appropriate.
Right.
So I get it. Yeah.
Yeah.
Agreed. Totally agree with that, Janet.
Hearing some strong feelings about four. You know, the other thing that you can do is if there is an area that, that you want to, you know, really acknowledge as a model area and encourage growth, when you look at setting goals the next time, you can, you can, you know, indicate that like this is an area that we would just love to see more in. And you can either say that in this document or you can just take that to the goal setting session. And so it doesn't, it doesn't mean that the work stops there. I doubt the work would stop there for Scott anyway. But the board can also say like, you know, we're, we're really looking at this area and this is great and we can't wait to see it accelerate. Yeah. Any thoughts about moving to four? I heard Jonathan say he, he would revise his three to a four. That would give us majority four.
I like the idea. I like your thought process. I, I like the idea of moving it to four, but making a note that we'd like to see that or can't wait to see that improvement, like Janet mentioned. It's not a criticism. It's a, it's a support, you know? I, I, and make sure that that's, that language is in there. Yeah, I like that idea.
About that?
Yeah.
Knowledge, excellent work. Look forward to.
Yeah.
Future growth. Continue.
Janet, what do you think?
Anybody argue with the four? Anybody want to make the case? Okay. Gonna put that. All right. You're halfway through. We can do it. All right. We're gonna go back up to standard three. Okay. Here we've got three threes and four fours. Go ahead and take a read. Gonna scroll a bit. And that's the end of that one, I believe. Okay. How you doing? Everybody get through it? And that is the end of that one. Okay. Thoughts on this? We've got some advocates for four, advocates for three. Let's have the same discussion. What do you, what was your thought process? And we can move to comments if, if we need to.
I, I, my rating was a three. And I think it was, if the opportunity had presented itself, you know, with, with all that went on this year, I think that we didn't necessarily get as deep into discussions around like achievement gap as, you know, we would have in a normal school year. So that's why I landed on a three. I think that to me, Scott is super on target. He, he knows where we need to go. He was very clear with that. And so I, yeah, I'm really excited to see what all the initiatives he's started this year, where that leads. And, and just excited to see the growth around the cultural, culturally responsive instruction.
So some context for the three noting that this is, this was an extraordinary year. Other thoughts?
I was gonna say add that I think it's, it's that he has obviously demonstrated a professional commitment to these goals, but I think his commitment is also personal. And I've, I've just been very impressed with his, how strongly he feels about getting this done for students at a personal level, just as a, as a matter of, of principle.
Janet, what did you, what did you score?
A four.
Okay.
Yeah.
I guess for me to, to give a four, I would, I think that we as a board probably needed to take a look at the data ourselves this year, you know, like we would have had maybe work sessions dedicated to looking at achievement gap that, so that we really could be part of that accountability process for this standard. So that's what's holding me back from a four.
Other thoughts about rationale? Four, four or three?
Can you scroll down again just a little bit? Thank you.
I provided a four and I believe that, again, I know this is, the theme is what a year, you know? That's, but for our superintendent to come in with this district with COVID in place and then to be bombarded unfortunately with the fires and ice. I feel that he has done a superb job because you have to imagine all the rocks that have fallen in the road and have gotten in the way of just going down the lane straight. So the immense amount of navigation through this very circuitous time. I've been very impressed. So that would be the reason why I did a four. So I, his, his ability to remain consistent, to continually keep his eyes looking forward, if you will, as we navigate through this incredibly curious and overwhelming time that we're in, his commitment to staying the course. So for me, that's a four.
So let's look at themes. And some of you sort of named your own inspirations for your score. What did you, what did you see as themes? And feel free to, you know, repeat what you said. But let's look at themes and then decide what score. But let's look at themes and then decide what score does that lead you to? Because one of the things that I'm hearing is threes use the year as context, and so did fours for and and sort of landed differently, right? Like, we couldn't fully assess this year. He met expectations, like what a year. He exceeded expectations. I don't think there's a lot of disagreement there. It's just what is the board's one voice message? So what are the themes that you saw?
I think following on on Lori's comment, Scott has made, and this is it, it's this is huge for our district, the implementation of the the curriculum mapping, the standard space curriculum mapping, which, you know, embedded in that is this culturally responsive piece. That is a huge goal that Scott has set out for our district that he's gonna, you know, it's it's a five-year plan, and he is committed to staying on track with that plan. And so I I I think that's a huge kudos piece and 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 evidence for a four. It's just at the beginning stages, and so it's not robust yet, I guess. And that's just because then maybe that's the same term I used before. It is developmentally appropriate, though, for where we're at. So you know, I could I could go with a four using that as evidence. And I'd also wanted to say that, you know, in future, that would be a growth area would be, you know, getting more of that data and analysis in front of the board so that we can be partners on the accountability piece. That, yeah, that would that would be something that I would I would like to see.
One of you asked for was themes, and and I think I'm not seeing a ton of themes in these comments, actually, not really. And it's not even really coming out exactly in our verbal. I think everybody, you know, this is kind of a subjective topic, right? And so everybody, I think, is looking at this from the perspective of, you know, what stood out to them. And I think you accurately summarized it when you said, you know, some people saw the 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 COVID year and the shutdown as as reason to give props. And some people saw it as reason to to hold back because there's growth potential. I I don't know how we I don't know how we get there. I agree with what Jennifer said. I was a four primarily because of the response. And well, really, the, you know, getting kids back in classrooms as soon as was possible and advocating for it consistently stood out to me, right? So for me, and when I look at the descriptors, you know, equitable access to safe and nurturing schools, opportunities and resources necessary. Well, in a COVID year, that translated for me into, let's get these kids back in front of the classroom because they're not effectively learning remotely based on at least my own personal evidence. So so that's, I I guess that's where I'm coming at it from. Having said that, I I could easily be convinced that a three is an appropriate score here. I, you know, I I think there's there's gray area between those two for me.
Do you think we might need to have some kind of asterisk beside some statements? Because this was such, you know, I think it's fair. A crazy year, like, because we're because I feel like we're in this standard three. I think it was standard eight, maybe, that we had the same kind of, like, the descriptors, you know, aren't really meshing with actually the year. And so could we potentially, because this does go in his file, and it would be good to have maybe an asterisk beside language that is pandemic COVID related. Wildfire and ice. I mean, you know,
The year.
You know, because clearly, hopefully, next year will be very different, right? And you can actually use the descriptors and have that data, you know, that Jennifer's talking about, but me, so that was my first idea. Yes. But my particular response to this inclusive district culture is based on this asterisk COVID year. He excelled at making sure that every student in this district had equitable access. I mean, he instructed the administrators. He was in contact with the community. He, you know, had communication with so many stakeholders and 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 provided the resources where he could and how he could with his cabinet to make sure that it was such, you know, it's a it's an inclusive culture, you know, I mean, he I think he did a phenomenal job under the circumstances, and I gave him a four because of that. I don't know any other person who could come into this position having not been a superintendent previously and do what he did. That was, it was unbelievable. So that's why I gave him a four. Now, moving forward, you know, in what we would call normal years, you could do that more database information. You know, do the descriptor. So that's my that's my two cents, I guess.
I was going to say, I totally agree with you, Shelley, because it's almost like you'd need to rewrite the descriptors to say, how well did you get internet access to every student in a huge district? How well did you get the, you know, the kids fed and lunches provided to them? How well did you get the teachers' supplies and the resources they needed when they couldn't get into the building? I mean, it was
Right.
It's an entirely different set of metrics that we were trying to satisfy.
Right.
And and according to those, I thought he knocked it out of the park. So
Yeah.
We really need to, this one in particular, I think, would really need to rewrite, just.
Have some asterisks everywhere.
Right. So one of the things you can say is, and I've done this quite a bit, is, you know, given the extraordinary circumstances of the school year, and and I think, you know, you could also say if you wanted to be a little stronger in that, that like this this standard, you know, the indicators or or, you know, components of this standard do not fit the the school year that we're evaluating.
Right.
And so, you know, considering the work of the superintendent in this last year.
Right.
Right. You know, we're we're evaluating this as a whatever you land on.
Right.
Right. You know, I I just want to say that I'm, you know, I originally have a had a three. I could go with a four that I think that every for I'm just rereading the bullets and the standards. Scott has planted some seeds that have such amazing potential. And that plan just hasn't come to fruition yet. And I think maybe that's part of why I have a three, because, you know, it says ensures instruction throughout the district utilizes culturally responsive practices. And all staff are trained. Like, I think we're headed in that direction. And I think that it's just not to fruition yet. And that's probably what has, you know, part of the reason that that held me back. But all of the other, you know, there's been initiative and implementation, and, you know, we've entered into this into this clear plan to, you know, do the curriculum mapping piece where, you know, teachers are involved. Well, teachers, it's all it surrounds teachers and and reflecting on their practice. So yeah, I I can be, I I'm fine with a four. I just wanted to put that out there. I I'm fine with the four, and I expect that we will talk more about achievement gaps moving forward.
Right.
That's another thing that we could put. Oh, sorry, Jonathan, did I interrupt you?
No, I didn't say anything. I was nodding my head. And it sounds like we're at a I mean, if she's considering a four, and there's already four fours, I think, I think we're at a four. So maybe.
Yep.
And I put a little thing down here that you acknowledge that the standard doesn't fit perfectly with the circumstances. Okay. Does that work?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm great with the language.
Great.
Thank you for that.
Yeah. This is, yep, this is an extraordinary time. Okay. Standard four. We had three fours, three threes, and one non-rated.
I just realized that I was talking about standard four when we were talking about standard three.
Uh oh.
It's okay. I think they're so close. Those two standards are so close that it's, yeah, anyway, just my mistake.
Well, Jennifer, thank you for saying that. You know, this is what you do, and this is what you're around. But that's what I feel like a lot of these are so intertwined. Pretty soon, you just feel like you're making stuff up to say, because it's it it's just, it's hard for me to some of these, like you say, it's like, how did, how is the descriptor different from the last one we just did?
Yeah, these two are really similar. But again, and again, I I just want to point out how Scott has chosen his initiatives strategically, because they all kind of, a a lot of what he's been doing goes into every single one of these standards. So that's another way to kudos to to Scott. But yeah, good, or definitely, these two are very similar.
My, you know, my summary actually sounded, now that now that you're saying what you said, Jennifer, my summary on this one sounded just like your summary on the last one. So I think we're probably in agreement on this one.
So one theme I'm seeing in this one is future things that he's doing. So language such as Superintendent Scott Drew can be frequently heard saying that our students must have options after high school. Scott is committed to cultivating instructional leaders. In addition, Scott is committed to hiring the very best instructional leaders. He set the stage for high achieving performance. I feel like all of this, these responses are more for in a in a fairly normal year. I think we've, I think a lot of us have heard the same commitment from Scott responding to the standard. But I don't think he's had the opportunity to actually really put it into action. Am I reading that wrong? But we know that he will do, like, we have confidence that he will do it. Is that?
Thoughts on that?
Is that?
Well, that's what I was saying at the on the last standard, but I was confused. So that's exactly, I mean, basically that that what you're saying jives with what I was saying before.
So, oh, I see. Okay. Okay, yeah. I gave him a four. Just because I mean, he's you know, he he is his instructional level of knowledge is outstanding. And he was able, in this pandemic, he was able to I mean, he just went above and beyond with trying to get as much academic instructional leadership as he could to his staff. I I just, I don't know. He he's just I don't know. I I think he did an excellent job, asterisk COVID.
What does the person who did not rate want to talk about that at all? You don't have to, but I just want to invite you to yeah, Tom.
Yeah, sure. Well, I mean, it 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 says it right there. I mean, and I don't I don't have the bullet points in front of me, but you know, in the title there, and improvement. And I don't know if there was a lot of, I mean, it's just so I I just, it it didn't imply. So I just, you know, it it isn't until we can see real in-person instruction and and the and the instructional leadership that he applies to the classroom that then I then I can see it, you know, we it and and, you know, where the the state doesn't want us testing the students this year nor last year. It it's just hard. It's just hard to really see it and 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 see if it was effective. So so I just I just chose to put, didn't apply, you know, COVID year. I mean, I I love what he talks about, but I want to see it. I want to see it applied. I want, you know, in in person, in an in-person, effective educational environment. So that's that's why I put not apply.
And so one of the things that I'm hearing from the group too is this is another one where the board acknowledges that, you know, that this standard, I mean, it is entirely contextual and circumstantial in certain ways. And and you can certainly acknowledge the work that was done, but it may not perfectly. Should we put that like we did with the last one?
I think that would be fair. I mean, we can't just throw it out. I I don't agree with just throwing it out and not giving him some kind of, you know, response to what he did this year. You know, I I, you know, I get the information that, you know, we want to have, you know, with data and testing. But and that is extremely important, but I don't think it should just be thrown out. I mean, we've got to give him some kind of response.
Well, and I was going to say too, that district culture is a very wobbly, mushy kind of multi. There's a lot going on when you're talking about training people to view things through an equity lens. That's so multi-dimensional. And so laying the groundwork for that in in his professional development opportunities, in the way he communicates, in the language that we all use. I mean, that's all part of us, just all learning how to do this better. And that takes time. So I certainly don't feel like it was a wasted year where we, you know, Scott couldn't get anything done. I I think he looked for opportunities to lay groundwork where he could, and he'll springboard up the springboard off of of what's been built, for sure.
I may be taking some liberties there, but I'm just sort of vamping of what you just said.
No, definitely.
So what does that, if this if this captures your thoughts and does provide some feedback with an asterisk, what what are we leaning for? You're pretty perfectly split here as far as score.
I'm I'm one of the threes. I think I'm still a three on this one for some of the reasons Jennifer mentioned when we were talking about the previous one. And and I, you know, I think I think there's just a lot of, you know, some of the things Tom said too, right? I mean, we it's really hard to say exceeds expectations in a year when we couldn't even assess the delivery of instruction, right? We really can't. And so that's that's a that's a hard sell for me to move it to a four.
How would fours feel about this one meeting the expectations you had in an extraordinary year?
I think that's where I struggle a little bit in sort of wrapping my head around what are we really evaluating here? Because if we're evaluating outcomes, student outcomes and grading Scott on on those data, that doesn't seem to be what we're supposed to be evaluating. We're we're, obviously, that's why we're all here, right? That's the that's the end result. But it seems to me what we're trying to evaluate is, how well did this individual attack and pursue and and make progress in these areas, given their constraints? And in any year, there could be any number of constraints. It might not be a pandemic. It might be a financial crisis. It could be any number of things. And so how well did this individual move that ball down the field, given what they had to work with? And and it feels like that's a, at least for me, that's how I'm interpreting these questions, rather than And it feels like that's, at least for me, that's how I'm interpreting these questions, rather than, well, what did you, what did you achieve? And oh, well, you couldn't do what you wanted to do because all this stuff happened. So, you know, so somehow that's a, that's a failure on your part. I don't see it though. I, I, so I guess that's my perspective. That's how I'm looking at a, a professional evaluation.
I would agree. And I, and I think we have to be real careful that we don't start hitting the theme that, well, because of COVID, I'm just going to say I gave Scott a four, and he was able to hire a brand new principal for our high school. That was huge. He was also able to take care of some of the other schools that needed leadership and principals and place those as well. And again, I always think of one of those superheroes that has something coming towards them, and they put up their magical wristbands and try to deflect and bounce it off. I mean, honestly, I'm very impressed, and I would say four easily, because I think he has proven that first year in our district with monumental obstacles. And he has been able to progress forward. And I find that to be absolutely outstanding. And I'm very impressed by that. So that's where my four is at. Even with an extraordinary year, there has been so much ground covered in a good way for this district. So that's it. I'll stop.
Anybody moved? But yeah, Tom.
Oh, just, just a quick, just, don't, don't anybody perceive that, that just because I didn't want to, that, that I gave an NA on this standard, and I, I might even have another one. I can't, I honestly don't, don't recall. Like, I didn't bring my papers with me. I think Scott's doing a fantastic job. I'm just looking at the, at the criteria, and I'm like, it, you know, it's just hard to measure. So I just, I just laid it aside. I mean, he's, he's done, you know, the, the, the standards we were given are hard to use in this, in this odd year. That's, that's my own, you know, I would add a qualifying statement to the end of that. I mean, I think he's doing a great job. So that, that's all I meant by that. That, that isn't a knock, you know, me giving, giving an NA on that. So just want to clarify. Thank you.
I think as, in the themes that we might consider putting in the idea of of giving credit, I guess, is what I mean, for the instruction, or excuse me, the hiring process protocol and, and you know, it was like an eight or nine step process that was implemented to get to instructional leadership that includes the culturally responsive piece. So that is something I just want to, you know, put out there in case we want to add that to the themes, because I think that's important to acknowledge. And it really will have a big impact for a long time on this standard, is, you know, who, who you hire makes a big difference. And I will say too, that again, I, I gave a three. I've already said this before, but I said it for the wrong standard. I gave a three. But I could see the four rating as well.
Okay, so if we've got one, three moving to, possibly moving to four, how do you feel about landing on four if we've got a majority?
Great. Well deserved.
Anybody argue?
Well, I already did, but I guess where we want to be. So.
Yeah, and I guess I have to say that, you know, when I did change my three to a four last time, I really thought it was this standard. So now I'm not sure about the last one. So I'm sorry to make this mess of it.
All right, we go with a majority. Comments capture hopefully what you wanted to convey. And again, nothing stops you from, from indicating that, you know, that next year, in a normal year, that there will be different expectations. Okay. We move on to five. All right, here's, here's a little bit more wonky here. We've got three fours, three threes, and a two. So go ahead and read. I think this one covers a couple of pages or more than one. I'm gonna scroll a little. Scroll some more. And a little more. There we go. Okay, how's everybody doing? Through? Okay. And I can always scroll down if you need to see the end. All right, we've got two, a two, threes, and fours. What were your thoughts when you were evaluating?
Well, I, I think for me, Scott's communication with his staff and with the board is excellent. I think the tricky part is, and probably will always be, is with the community. And information flow in this community, and I've not lived in other small communities, but it's really, it's hard to manage. It's, it's hard to control the messaging. It's hard to get consistent information flowing out there. And so I think it's a huge challenge, and I don't think there's any easy answer. I gave it a three just because I think this is a learning process and probably a painful one, where he just finds his groove and how it works well. And, and, you know, we, we all are trying to do better in this area. We've, we've all suffered through some things. It's just, it's just difficult. And so again, this isn't really a criticism of anything he hasn't done well or enough. It's more just acknowledging that this is something that we always are working on. You're never done, you know? That's really, those are my thoughts behind my, my tree.
I'm going to weigh in with a ditto, and I'll make it quick. Thanks, Janet.
Tom?
Yeah, I'll give a ditto also. And I, and mine was a, mine was a two, just kind of the same thing. I think it's just, in my statement, there's just so much online communication that I, I think a lot of people just got emailed out. I don't think it's really his fault, but I don't know. It's developing. Good luck trying to figure it out. Janet nailed it.
So Tom, how are you feeling about your two? Is that calibration or are you?
Calibration. It just, it's just, you know, developing isn't bad. I mean, that, that's not a terrible score. It's, it's, it's developing. I mean, and, and, and it was, and it was an awful year. I mean, that's not a, you know, so I didn't, I don't feel that as a bad score. That's just, you know, work to do, I suppose. But like I said, it was, it was, it was, it, once again, COVID environment. So, so.
I'd have a hard time with a two because there was a lot of, I think as Janet said so well, there was a lot of great communication initiatives that happened and continue to happen. And communication in some areas was improved dramatically. And at the same time, I agree that I don't think that you'll ever be perfect at communication. I think it would be really hard to envision, you know, imagining that everybody's happy with the communication. So I think three is appropriate despite the, despite the challenges or, you know, including the, the challenges that have been faced this year.
Some of our fours want to weigh in?
Well, I was a four. Surprise. I guess what I focused on with Scott coming in to an extremely difficult situation is, you know, what communication was before he came. Yeah. Which was horrific. And what he did, even in a COVID period, he established, and his team, established extremely good relation communications with his administrative team, with his cabinet, with SFEA, with the classified staff. His teachers rock every week. You know, parent square, it's a uniform way to send everybody an email to get information out. You know, social media was, you know, it could have been hit or miss or whatever. You know, I agree with Janet with communication is, it can always be improved, but from, from my standpoint, even if it was a normal time, the communication was above and beyond. And in this pandemic and fires and ICE, it went even more above and beyond. He was extremely, he put out his cellphone number for people to call him and said, I am here at your service. Call me anytime to his staff, to his, his administrative team and staff. I have never seen that before. So I looked at this as an extremely impressive implementation of better communication. If we didn't have COVID or pandemic, I think he would be getting all fours. But because of circumstances he couldn't control, he did the best he could with that, but also implementing long-term communications with important stakeholders. So I'll defend my four. I, I won't, I won't go down to a three. But, you know, I'm one of seven. So, thank you.
Well, I'm, I'm happy to defend my four. I, what I have appreciated, there was one time I opened up my email. I had so many emails from him. And I, I remember thinking briefly, holy cow, I'm going to need a bigger folder for all these. You know, and I realized, you know, and I thought to myself, no, this is exactly one of the things that I was looking for in a superintendent that could freely communicate, whether it be good or bad, but communicate to the board. So you constantly know what's happening in that moment. And frankly, there's been a lot to communicate. I mean, not just what goes on in the district in education, but all the other things. Frankly, I, I think he's a four. And I deeply appreciate all the doors that he has opened for the teachers, for SFEA, for everyone. It's wonderful to know that the communication is flowing both ways in this district. It's, it's very, it's very good to have that step to build trust, to build openness, and yet still being respectful and cordial throughout. I stand by my four. Thank you.
So let's get some themes, and then we'll look at, we'll look at where we go. What are the, what are the things that you've seen here?
I'd like to put in the word transparency in capital letters. I mean, I've, you know, he, he puts everything out there that is in the best interest of the district as a whole. And that is going to be the best interest of the students in the end.
Great. Consistency in his communication approach.
I saw quite a few things around community relations and challenging. I'm sort of looking at that first sentence of that second paragraph as well there, but there's, there, that kind of was a theme that there was, there were some challenges and maybe, may, you know, not necessarily, you know, it's an extraordinary year, but I saw that theme. So I don't know how we want to capture.
Do you see that they are challenges that continue to be challenges or challenges that were improved or overcome? Or how would you say that those challenges were approached?
With an open mind and, and a learning mentality, right? I mean, that's, you know, we just were talking about one of those that today's meeting, right? So this is, it's just an ongoing thing. And I think, I think, I, well, I, I think that this has been, it's, it's been a challenging year for sure.
Yeah, and, and, you know, communication efforts have not gone uncriticized. I mean, they, they, there have been, there's been criticism of communication efforts, and Scott's always welcomes feedback, no matter if it's positive or negative, and reflects on, reflects and, and learns and listens to people giving the feedback.
Agreed.
Any other themes that you picked up on?
One thing I would like to capture is, it's hard to explain. So I know that Scott never likes to walk things back, right? He, he likes to set a direction, commit to it, and then help other people understand this is where we're going. This is what we're doing and doesn't like to keep switching gears. It's that issue of stability. It's the issue of consistency and stability. Well, we've been in an environment where we keep getting different instructions from the state. And he's had to switch gears and pivot this tanker that we have to turn every time the state says, no, do this now. So I guess what I think he's been really good at is in the midst of that, seeking and achieving some sense of stability of like, no, we are still working the plan. We're tweaking the edges. We're gonna do a little bit of this now. We're gonna do a lot of that, but we're still working the plan. And I think that's been really, I know there's been criticism, but I think in general, the sense has been that the district is moving in a certain direction and we're not going to be just buffeted every time we get a new piece of information. We're not going to do a 180. I'm sorry, that's really hard to capture because it was full of metaphors, but.
So Reader and I just wrote and see if that captures it for you Janet?
Yes.
Okay. So looking at these, at these comments.
Can you, can you just, can, can we consider adding to that sentence that you just wrote? Consistent and steady and, and maybe reinforcing or reminding folks the overall goal because every communication, right, has a context. And then there's also this overarching umbrella that, you know, this is what we're working towards. And, and, and I do agree with Janet that Scott reminds us about that in his communications.
Thank you. So given these, these comments, what score does this lead you to? Regardless of what you individually gave, what does the, what is the board saying?
Well, it looks to me like it's a four.
Well, it's, there, there have been challenges though. I mean, I really, they're, they're, I, I think Scott is an amazing communicator and he keeps communication front and center in his, you know, order of operations for work. And you're never going to fully satisfy everyone on the communication front. But I, I guess I can't, I, I guess I disagree with just the, you know, that all of these themes are, you know, indicate a level four because there have been challenges and, and I think not, not insignificant challenges in communicating with families in particular.
Well, I agree Jennifer, but I think some of that has to do with the person that is listening.
I get that too.
You know, so I mean, the communication's there, but if you don't want to hear what you're hearing, then it's not very good communication. So I was just going off of what the board listed. And if you look just at that, that's a four, I think.
If I look at the numbers, I see a three. So that's where I, and that, that's just what I see. And that's irrelevant of what I scored. And I, that's what I see.
How many of you would say, if you just raise your hand, how many of you would say four? Not individually, but gi- given the conversation and the comments, how many of you would say four as the will of the board at this point? Okay, two? Or Laurie's your hand up two?
Yes, it's up.
All right. How many of you would say three at this point? Got four. All right. Could everybody live with a three?
Yeah, I could live with a three.
Well, we don't have a choice if it's the majority of the board.
Majority.
So that's how that works. You know, majority says three. Then we all have to agree to three.
Okay. Last one. And then you get rid of me. All right. Effective organizational management. We've got five fours, a three and a two. Now scroll.
Well, can you go? The second paragraph, sorry.
You're good. Okay, gonna scroll a little bit. Scroll a little more. And more. Again, there you go. So let's start. Are everybody done reading or do you need a minute? One more minute. Okay. So let's start this time with the themes that you're seeing. We'll worry about scores in a minute. What'd you say?
Rigorous hiring standards.
I think rigorous. Somebody put in ethical hiring standards. Could I add to that Jonathan?
Yeah, yeah, that's.
Okay. I saw that a couple of times.
Prioritizing a positive relationship with our employee unions. Sorry, my brain is turning shut down.
Gonna be pumpkin tournament.
Great. What else?
He's not afraid to move people into positions that he thinks they'll be more successful in potentially. That can be a really difficult thing to do as a new, a new leader. And he's demonstrated that he wants people where they will actually be successful and he's not. Maximizes their productivity and recognizes where their talents are.
Can you scroll down just a little bit?
I think Scott gives, he makes feedback and appropriately so. Feedback is like, that is learning, right? When you're, when, when, when a, anybody, human, but a child receives feedback, then they can learn. And I think Scott makes that feedback loop front and center throughout the organization. And I think that is super important for moving forward and achieving goals.
Are there anything else on this one? You saw his themes.
So I did see a few. That's why I asked you to scroll down because I wanted to see if somebody else wrote it, but I've seen this theme of Scott recognized that leaders lead in all levels of the organization, like, like the organization, he has transformed even before he was superintendent or before he, you know, he, he, it's in multiple. God, I can't even put my words together.
Like a distributed leadership thing? Is that?
Yeah, it's, can you scroll back up? Like, sorry, there's a lot on this one. I think there's like, this is a long one. Scott started planning for organizational systems even before his contract year started. One of the first things Scott clarified when he started in July is clarify the organizational structure for the district office. He already knew what he wanted to do with the organizational structure. I feel like multiple board members, like we all knew that, like it was, like many of them knew that. So superintendent Scott Drew has made a big difference in the SFSD organization this year. So like he, he, he portrayed that to all of us, if not through action, but through dialogue and goals, maybe. And he did it, like he's, he implemented it and it, it took shape. I feel like that's what several of the board members said.
Scroll up a little bit so I can see all of the themes. I think we don't have anything yet about systems, but part of, you know, organizational management is creating effective systems. So I don't know if there's anything more that we could add to that idea, but Scott's been really deliberate about creating systems. Again, to maximize student growth. That's the end, the end in mind is student growth.
Be fine having that, that added to the one that Kristen just wrote with Shelley's help, right? I think we could add systems there and keep, keep that, right Shelley?
I was just gonna say that Jonathan. Yeah, totally agree with that. I think that could be incorporated in that statement.
That to incorporate this.
Creating system, yeah, into the statement that I just made about, yeah. So Scott planned ahead for changes and improvements and systems to maximize student growth. He can, and then he conveyed this through dialogue and goals. Yeah.
It's getting wordy.
Okay, there. So what do these, what do these comments say to you about the board's overall score?
Well, if you, oh.
That's, that's my two cents.
Sorry Jonathan, I didn't hear what you said. Could you say it again?
I, I said, just looking at the numbers and the words, it's hard not to see a four. So that's my two cents.
The argument with that, I see a lot of heads nodding. Okay. Just scroll through, make sure we're actually done. I believe we are. I've been keeping track. Yes, we are. Okay. So, nice job, everybody. What I would like to do is first ask you, are you planning to adopt this tonight? Are you adopting another night? Okay, okay.
Meaning to take this up at the next meeting for adoption. We people have the opportunity to, you know, I guess think about their vote and it's already like.
Yeah. So what I'm gonna do is, is consolidate all of, like, you've, you've seen the individual comments. What I'm gonna do is, is create a framework that looks like this, but that contains the board comments and the board's rating and send that back to you. I'm also gonna send back to you sort of a general, like a one-page statement that you could release to the public. I mean, none of this has been executive session, but like, I'll send that to you in case you want to use it anyway. And I can do that. I'll do that this week so that you've got that. Orly. Okay. Anything else you need from me? Thanks for hanging in there with me.
Thanks Kristen. Really helpful.
Great conversation. Nice job, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very helpful.
Thank you. Bye.
Thank you. Bye.
So as she alluded, we're gonna take this up as an action item at our next meeting. Just heads up, guys. Okay, well, it's now late or even then. We have remaining one item, which is next year's school calendar draft. I've got a hunch that's pretty fast. We can talk today. Go, go ahead.
Yeah, so, and I wanted to mention also, Kevin Palmer is here. Kevin has been helping us working with representative groups of stakeholders and coming up with the calendar for next year. And I, I believe the comment that kept coming most frequently. the calendar for next year. And I, I believe the comment that kept coming most frequently kept, I can't believe this is a normal calendar for a calendar year and, and but before that, I want to give a shout out to two people who are the last two standing in the attendees section. Special shout out to Michelle Stadley and I believe her cousin, Teres, a huge shout out. Math respect to you two. If you're listening, just know it has not gone unnoticed.
Yeah.
Sorry, Kevin. So and this work, and I wanted Kevin to say a few words and he can take us through the calendar, has been pretty seamless. And Kevin has a lot of experience doing this work and, and working through again, one of the strategies that we value most in this district, which is collaborative governance and, and along the lines of feedback and all that. So Kevin, can I go ahead and turn it over to you and you can sort of walk us through what the draft is?
Yeah, you know, I'm going to go ahead and share it or is somebody else going to do that?
Jennifer, did you have a question?
No, I just wanted to say to publicly acknowledge Kevin for his duties at the bus barn. Thank you for taking that on. That's a huge issue and we appreciate your added responsibilities.
Thanks, Jennifer. You're welcome. You can share a screen, Kevin. Thank you.
Can everybody see this? Okay.
Yes.
All right. Okay. Well, thanks. Thanks for having me tonight, folks. Yeah, this will be pretty quick, as John said. First, I want to thank the people that really collaborated on this Vance Taylor, Ty Bauer, Susan Sears, Chris Freeman, Alison Stolffus and Lainey Mandish. They all came together representing their, their associations and it was a very, very slick process. Very positive all the way through and, and yeah, like Scott mentioned, the, the most notable thing about this calendar is that it's not notable. And it's, it's just a calendar. It's a basic calendar like we have every year. And I think that a lot of people found some comfort in seeing that and putting that together and they're hoping it stays that way as we all are, I'm sure. I did want to point a typo out that I caught. So I apologize for that. When I sent that in, it is down here just above the, the yellow highlight that talks about conference prep, where you see it says January 27th and June 17th, end of grading periods. And that grading period, the January 27th is correct, but the June 17th is not. That should be June 16th. And that was on the original draft and that didn't get changed. So that that will need to be changed to June 16th to be accurate, but everything else should be looking good on the calendar. And, you know, you've got the semesters and the grading periods, which are very important, especially to the high school. The high school folk are very happy with the way the grading periods kind of balance out. You can never really get them totally balanced. But they like the, the relative balance of each of the grading periods as well as the number of days in the two semesters. So they're, they're very happy with that. Good to go. That sometimes can be a challenge as far as getting those balanced out the right way. And then I wanted to mention one other thing. It is all the way down at the bottom here. Not sure that that will necessarily need to stay on the calendar, but it was more of a, a good place to have that land and you don't really see it on the, the monthly, on the days of the month, but in our pre-service week in August, we will have our classified staff back for two days instead of just one day. And that's something that everybody had planned to do a year ago, but then that, that kind of got messed up a little bit, but that's going to be a huge benefit to buildings, to staff in general, to our classified folk, to our business office, for not having to deal with time cards and, and details like that. As staff came in for our district get together at the high school during that week. And so, you know, more on that later from Dan, I would guess, you know, as we, and Scott, as we get closer to, to pre-service next year. But bottom line is we get to have our valuable classified folk for two days in that pre-service week, which is going to make a big difference. Teachers will love it. The classified staff will love it, being, being there in the buildings and, and just have a very smooth process out of that. So that's going to be a big plus for next year. Other than that, guys, there's, there's not, not a lot to point out necessarily. It's kind of our basic calendar. Once we combined all three different calendars several years ago into one district-wide calendar. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer, but no, maybe just get it back up or we can see. You know, mostly from the top.
Hey, Kevin, I have a quick question for you.
Yeah.
Can you scroll back down to kind of the bottom of the
Oh, sure.
calendar?
Yeah.
Keep going. Okay, there. It says makeup days due to inclement weather closure. So the, so if there's inclement weather, the first closure will not be made up.
Correct.
Correct. Okay.
Yeah.
The second, potential second closure is March 14th makeup day?
Yes, that day would be, that day would be turned into a student contact day.
Okay.
That would be our March, spring conference day. And so that's kind of a collaborative effort that came out of collective bargaining.
Okay.
That, that, the calendar committee, so we have SFBA and OSEA.
Right.
We sit down, we kind of look at what makes the most sense to return to student contact day. So the first day would be the, the spring conference day. And then if there's a, another closure, we would return the conference prep and grading day to student contact day on March 11.
Oh, I see. Okay. I was reading it opposite. Okay, that makes more sense. Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Yeah. Thanks.
Any other questions for Kevin? Any comments on this? I, by the way, I noted that it was remarkably normal too. I think that was the thing that struck me, you know, the, just the way the weeks fell. So thank you.
You bet.
And five days a week in school. Let's keep it that way.
Amen.
Wow.
Yeah, it's, it's just, just our, our regular solid type of calendar. So hopefully, hopefully we'll get right into it.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, if there's no other questions, I'm going to move us along because we've got a couple of things we have to do.
All right.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thanks, Kevin. All right. Thanks, guys.
All right. Under item seven, discussion items, we have seven or eight policies. This is a first reading on each of them. So one possibility is if we wanted to, we could sort of delay discussion for the next reading because there will be, I believe, three. Dan, is there any plan to try to move these through? I think one of them, you said you wanted maybe to go through with just two.
Yeah, the only one that, and, and I think we could live with a third reading on it, but the, the only one was the one that we added late, which was related to criminal records check and fingerprinting. That was the only one that I, you know, has sometimes time sensitivity to it.
Do you want to mention why, Dan, why that's so sensitive?
Well, there's, there's actually several factors. The one that caught our attention was when we were working to try to get our bus drivers fast tracked out of state bus drivers. And we were on the phone, literally on the phone with ODE with their fingerprinting team. And they said, well, by the way, we actually check your policies when we go through this. And they pointed out that our policy hadn't been up, wasn't updated. So that was one reason to get that, that corrected to current, their current practices and in accordance with the law. So that was, that's kind of how it brought to our attention, but there are, there are a lot of new regulations regarding volunteers related to fingerprinting and background checks. So there's a lot into this policy that we have to follow by law anyway. Now, we haven't been having volunteers in our buildings for obvious reasons this year, but that hopefully is going to change soon. So, but that was the one that caught our attention. And so that's, that's just why we, we brought it forward.
Thank you.
Question on that, if you.
Yeah.
We're on that. Okay. On, on the second page, you list some of the positions that require a head coach, assistant coach, overnight chat around. No subs are listed. Do we only get subs now from edgy, edgy staff? And they're all, they take care of all of that, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And just to put the one line on here, just to that, that clears this up for our bus drivers was just below that list where it says the district shall begin the employment of a subject individual or terms of a district contractor on a probationary basis pending the return and disposition of the required records checks. So that one, our previous policy was we'd have to wait for the fingerprinting to get done and come back before they, and which could take weeks. And the, these contractors already performed those background checks as well. ODE just has to run them through their, their process. So we don't feel like we're putting kids at risk. But that was just to point that one out.
Okay. Cool.
I want to just thank, you know, the folks that have been working hard to put these lists together with the change bars and the, the cover sheets. I think that's really helpful. I think there was only one that I had a couple of questions on, but I can bring that up next time. It was regarding BBF. I, I don't think it was clear to me exactly what was changing. And maybe I just didn't spend enough time trying to sift them. But anyway.
I want to echo or piggyback on that, Jonathan. The, it took us a little bit of the, the superintendent policy work group. But I think we hit a stride here this last month. And I think that, you know, we really have got a good system going. Really, it's just really great. I can't think, you know, you all are volunteers already. So thank you to Shelley, Lori and Tom for additional volunteering to on this group, but Don and Dixon's contributions to this group are phenomenal. So, yeah.
I agree. Just unbelievable and supportive. I just don't know how we would get this done without, without everybody's help.
I love the cover sheets, by the way. Those are.
Yes, I was going to mention it would back that you have for us. That was Dawn's idea.
That's all Dawn.
Credit to her. And if there are ways we can make that more user friendly for all years.
Yeah, that cover sheet was all Dawn Tacker. She's, she's amazing. I, I did want to mention one thing, Scott and Dan. If we wanted to just get something crossed off our list, the COVID-19 related leave, you know, and the AR are simply recommended for deletion.
Yes.
From, you know, OSBA because they're using, they have taken some of that language out of that standalone policy and have implemented it in other policies permanently. So we don't need a standalone policy anymore or an AR. So that right there could be a quick, you know, that was a fast track to the board to get that, you know, an approved for deletion. And then we can move on, you know, with the other policies that have that particular language that's been implemented in the other ones. So if we could at least do that tonight, we could get some stuff crossed off our list. I know it's 11 o'clock, but boy, it would just feel so good.
Right, but we didn't.
As well.
There are any actions tonight related to all first readings. So I think we should stick with that.
That's a bummer. Yeah, that's a bummer.
Any other discussion on any of the policies that are listed?
I mean, did you have a question on BBF, Jonathan, that we need to discuss?
Not tonight because I won't be coherent. So.
So will that be on the next, on the, or will all of these be on the regular agenda then? In April?
Second reading, they'll have to be.
Okay, just want to make sure. Okay.
Excellent.
With that.
One, one clarification to related to Shelley's request. And I'm just, you know, if we wanted to, based on policy, I believe that a second reading that those policies could be on for deletion at that meeting if there was no. So, so that could be a fast track instead of three readings, go to two and have those just pointing that out there maybe for next, next go around.
Right. Thanks, Dan.
I think at, at our agenda development meeting, we ought to, we ought to kind of walk through and see which ones make sense based on feedback tonight and based on recommendations from the work group. Okay, with that, I believe we are ready now to move into executive session under S1926602F to consider information or records that are exempt by law from public inspection, specifically regarding a sick leave bank request. And so remember, everybody, we logged completely out of the Zoom and click on the other link Debbie sent in the email. And pray that works.
This stays upright.
Yeah. So this will stay active. At this point, we do not have a single attendee remaining.
Shocking.
But yes, this will stay active and then we will rejoin when we wrap up.
Okay.
All right. It looks like we are mostly all here. I haven't seen video or audio enabled for a couple of board members. If you could just make sure you're on so that I know you're back. Great. Tommy, back? Yep. Okay.
I'm here.
Perfect. Did I make sure everybody? Yeah, I think we're all here, right, Debbie? I'm double checking.
I believe everybody's here. Yes.
Thank you. Okay, we are returning to regular open session and we have one item remaining consideration of a sick leave bank request.
I move to authorize the sick leave bank request process for 15 days on behalf of Mary Dixon.
So moved in second and in a discussion. Debbie, if you take the boat lanes.
Yes. Jennifer, Jonathan.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Shelley.
Yes.
Irv.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Lori.
Yes.
And Janet.
Yes.
Thank you all in favor.
Excellent. Well, thanks, everybody. I really appreciate your collaboration tonight and we'll talk to you guys soon. Meeting adjourned.
Good night, everybody.
Everyone.